Great. All right. So, all right, I'd like to, it's seven o'clock. Yep. I'd like to call to order the August 13th meeting of the Carlisle Select Board. This is a hybrid meeting and we will start with a roll call vote for attendance. So alphabetically. We don't have Barney.
Okay.
David not coming, do we know anything about?
Might be him.
He might be here, all right, well, we'll.
Okay.
All right, so.
But then if we're all. Kate Reed here.
Reed I, Snell I.
Triola I.
Okay, so we have a quorum.
The back half of the alphabet.
That's right, that's right. Tonight, we're going to have an agenda that consists of community input, then appointments and resignations. We'll talk about executing the state primary warrant. Then the climate leader program discussion at 7:20. 7:40, there'll be a treasurer collector discussion on a couple of items. Then at 8:10, the town planner is going to present information regarding the town meeting warrant request, as well as the bog house, I'm sorry, the accessory apartment by law and the MBTA communities update. We'll then review the town administrator draft by law and review the warrants and minutes, cemetery deeds and transferred liaison reports, and then finally, community input at the end of the evening.
You missed the town administrator report.
The town administrator report will be in there at the, at 9:35 or thereabouts. So, we typically begin with community input. We have a process and procedure in place where we will call on people within the community or in the audience or who would like to speak on any topic, preferably relevant to our agenda, but it could be on any topic. And you will have two minutes to speak and that can be extended by one minute at my discretion. So, is there anyone who would like to speak? I don't see anyone in the, sitting before us, so if there's anyone online who has any public comment, please indicate by raising your hand or maybe showing yourself online and. Okay. Well, seeing none. We will move on to, and we have the. Look who's joined us.
Yes.
This is great. Okay, so, we now have four members and let the record note that David Modell arrived. And we will move on to appointments and resignations.
All right.
So.
It started at 6:59, I haven't heard that.
All right. I move to appoint Lane Lenicky Barlow, or Lenkey, sorry, Lenkey Barlow to the position of driver laborer for the Department of Public Works pending required hiring administration with an anticipated start date of August 14th, 2024.
Second.
Ryan, is there any information or anything you want to add?
No, this is just one of three vacancies we have at the DPW, so we're excited to fill it. We continue to find qualified people and we're hoping that Lane is a great fit. We certainly think so. And we need all the help we can get, especially headed into the fall. Everyone sees all the construction that's happening around and then, of course, the winter. So, excited to welcome Lane.
Great. So, we'll do a roll call, or actually, we don't want you to, so we'll just do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay.
Move to appoint Kathleen Bond to the position of interim school, sorry, social services coordinator for the Council on Aging and Human Services in addition to her duties as office manager, transportation coordinator with an anticipated start date of August 14th, 2024.
Second.
Anything else, Ryan, or?
So Kathleen does a great job for us in the Council on Aging and Human Services. As you know, Melissa resigned her position. We are in the process of reviewing this with Carol and the Council on Aging and Human Services, the need and positions in the Council on Aging and who best to fill them and what, what roles everyone should play. So, this is coupled with Carol going on vacation for a couple of weeks and not being available. As you know, she used to be the social services coordinator. So Kathleen's going to cover the position while Carol's gone. When Carol comes back, she'll cover that position and then we will work to come with some type of final plan to the Council on Aging and the board.
Great. Any other discussion? Okay, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right.
Okay, I move, well, recognize that the resignation of Debbie Geltner from the Land Stewardship Committee effective July 19th, 2024, and the resignation of Jason Walsh as an associate member of the planning board.
We thank them both for their service.
We do.
All right. Community appointments. It looks like we are expanding our safety committee charter as included in the packet and the slate is identified below. So, let's look at that.
I think we should look, you want to look at the charter?
Yeah, let's start with the charter.
And that's on PDF page eight.
Yep.
So the, the two substantive changes here are, or three, I should say, is the committee will now be comprised of seven members appointed by the select board rather than five. We have seven volunteers that are very eager to do this work, so we figured we'll start there. And then one of the members would be a member of the select board. The only other change is just administrative that I'll assign staff as necessary to assist this committee and not make them members of the committee, just to make it, make it all volunteer with staff support.
Great.
So you said you have seven volunteers plus a select board person or six?
Six and one, six and select board.
Members, all right. Any questions, comments on the charter? I did notice a spelling, a typo, you may want to, in the first paragraph. Further, the committee provide recommend, will provide recommendations, probably. Maybe you just, you may want to edit that.
Yeah, I, I had a little struggle with the second sentence, but I decided to let it go. But it just, it's a little awkward. The mission of the committee is to bring attention to and work to eliminate unsafe conditions for pedestrians, bicyclists, bicyclists and drivers of motorized vehicles of all ages and abilities.
Probably. You've got to cover everyone.
Yes, so I wasn't sure where to put that phrase. I don't feel like it's in the right spot, but then I couldn't figure out where else to put it and I wasn't sure whether I really needed. Well, that too, so.
Attention to and work to.
I like the intent of it.
I like, and I.
The whole intent here was.
I wasn't going to say anything, but since you put your two cents about this other thing.
I mean, you don't necessarily need of all ages and abilities.
Yeah, I think we should just take that out.
Okay, so you want to strike all ages.
Unless we want to restrict ages and abilities. People competent enough to drive a car.
Bicyclists, drivers of motorized vehicles of all ages.
But I think if they're.
The rationale was to be.
Or, or put, and bicyclists and drivers of all ages and abilities. And, and, you know.
Maybe you don't need of ages.
We just don't need it there because then, because it's bicyclists and drivers of motorized vehicles.
Yeah, whoever they are, it doesn't matter what age they are and what their ability is.
The best judgment, so maybe we could strike that. Are you taking notes, Ryan? You'll do that. I did have a question too on this. The committee will have three main focus areas. The first one, implement approved projects as assigned by the select board and town administrator in accordance with the town's capital plan. What do we as a select board think we might assign or, it says the TA too. I mean, what would the, what's an example?
Implement is probably, well, now that you bring it up, I don't think implement's the right verb. They don't implement.
Right.
Ryan's guy's implementing.
Does that mean like a sign? Like if the sign came to us, they said, we want to put a new stop sign or something up. Is the implementation the adding that stop sign?
I don't think, we would, we wouldn't be that prescriptive. We would say, there's a problem over here and people are complaining about it in the city of the woods. They'd research it and say, we recommend you put a stop sign.
Correct, and we would vote on it.
We would vote, so I don't think that's right.
How about recommend?
Study, recommend, yeah, recommend.
Make recommendations as assigned.
Yeah, in accordance with, you know, select board directive.
Yeah, because.
Safety recommendations as a sign by.
Another example would be footpaths.
Signed as a little strong, but as guided by or recommended by. Make recommendations as.
I don't think you need one. You don't think you need the.
You don't need one? Okay, so you want to take it out?
Take it out, that's easier.
Yes, all right.
It's kind of self-evident once we vote.
Pedestrian safety, I like, yes, I like.
That's good.
And traffic safety.
Those are the two and three hard things.
Unless it was meant, Ryan, was it meant for other workplace projects or, or conditions? Because we had talked about, it wasn't just pedestrian safety.
Or this bicycle, this bicycle part of traffic.
I know, but we also talked about general safety of the, of the town and the workplace.
I'm not positive, but I think it was trying to keep some of the old committee and add new stuff and it just doesn't make sense, so.
Okay.
Just take it out.
All right, I'm happy to, I just was wondering if that's what it was.
Charter.
Well, the question is though, is, does this committee have that other focus though? Because we did talk about it.
Other focus as in?
As in workplace safety in town and things like that.
That's a good point.
It was more than that, it was a safety committee.
Right.
Not just.
Yeah.
The people that are volunteering are.
In fact.
I'm assuming that's more geared toward pedestrian and traffic safety.
But in the first paragraph, it says, further the committee provide, you know, would provide recommendations to the select board about unsafe conditions and remedies for town workplaces.
Okay, but a fair statement, I think you're right. So then, so the mission then has to be changed because the mission is very pedestrian and vehicle centric.
Unless you include.
I think it's a good place to start and we can just throw other things in there if we feel like it down the road.
Yeah, I got enough to do right now, so I'd say.
And there's a need.
I actually agree with Kate, we, and I was one of the ones that, you know, was a proponent of enhancing it to mean all safety, but really, that's a different mission. You might eventually find it's way better. Why don't they start with this?
We'll take out number one, we're going to add the will provide and then.
And are we leaving the last sentence of the first paragraph in there? Related to workplace?
We're taking out all ages and abilities.
Remedies, well. I mean.
That's a big.
You could leave it in there, but not make it a main focus area.
No.
Probably not.
Because doesn't like the MFC, I mean, that's part and parcel to a lot of the work that's being done and it seems like that now creates a bit of a.
That's a different thing.
Right.
I would say, yeah.
All right.
Why don't you strike that sentence through?
So take out further, the committee will provide a recommendation, select board, about unsafe conditions.
Right.
And if we find we need to add that back in, then we can do that.
Well, the only thing is, is there, it does say they provide recommendations to the select board. It's, that's a critical component of what they do.
Well, it, maybe it's the last phrase then.
Or just leave unsafe conditions and remedies.
I mean, I have a mission, they're, they're appointed by.
Just delete for town workplaces and leave it at.
Unsafe.
But, but does, I mean, is it necessary to say in a select board created committee that they're going to provide recommendations to select, that's what all the committees do?
Yeah, fair enough.
Is there a committee we appoint that doesn't come back with a recommendation? There's plenty of road committees that get elected, but the ones we create.
We appoint, the cons come and they don't come to us every time they want to do something. They just do it. And I'm just saying, you want to be clear so that there's no.
I'm okay with that, I'm just saying, then we should really do that with every charter. Like, really, we should, instead of putting words in, we should just make sure we, that's kind of our objective, right? Is to touch base with all our committees.
Okay, well, I just don't want this to turn into something where they just, you know, decide unilaterally they want to put up a bunch of signs and then do it without.
Well, they, right.
But you're right, we can eliminate it and just tell them that.
Just delete for town workplaces and the last sentence is just recommendations, select board, about unsafe conditions and remedies.
Don't say further, just say the committee.
And we also don't want them to.
Leave everything except for.
For town workplaces.
For town workplaces. So you would leave all that out, the further, it does provide the other things, but we just take out.
I would, I mean, my, my version is take it out and then the, this committee will have three main focus areas. Or two main focus areas for which it will provide the select board with recommendations. Like, I'd make it more pointed, like, come back to us.
That's fair.
Okay.
So we're going to strike the last sentence of the first paragraph and add the text. The committee will have three main areas of, two main areas of focus for which it will provide recommendations to the select board.
Right. Kind of right, yeah.
Yep.
Perfect.
Semi-con.
Actually called them, I like that.
Oh, no, let's get into it.
Okay, before we, we could spend all night on this.
Yes.
So I have one other minor question, which is, there must be already, there are like three standing members presently?
You appointed them last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the new ones, from my understanding, I've received a few emails directly about, about all the hazards that we've had, the North Road incident and something like that. So, many of these are, people are interested in, in that.
There's nothing like a major accident.
Yep. Okay. I do like to see that they're not just in one area, that they, so that you have people that are familiar with different areas of town and the general conditions there, so that's good.
So do I have a motion to, can I get a motion to accept the charter as amended for the safety committee?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. All right, next, Kate, I think you have the list there.
I do, but, okay, I move to appoint Kate Reed.
Do you want to go through all of them?
Yeah, okay, I move to appoint.
Can we move to point the slate? Is there a discussion on it? And any, I had one point, Brian, for you, or maybe it's really for Gretchen or Aubrey who does this. Is it possible to add in a category in the, in the website where you submit your form to say the number of years you've been a resident of Carlisle? Because I just think that is an interesting fact. It doesn't, you know, because sometimes we're, you know, we want, I think, in my, what I would like to see is a committee made up of a broad variety of people who are not only longtime residents, but also new residents.
On the website or you want to put it on the application?
The application is what I meant, sorry. Because that way, we can see and we can, you know, look at committees and if there's ever, you know, questions about how to best.
Yeah. Sure, okay with me.
Okay.
Is that a problem?
Done.
Okay, great.
So, I move to appoint the slate as identified below. I don't like that for, I guess you'll copy it. The one, the one thing I do want to point out is that these appointments are all. No, they're two years.
Do you want to do each one?
Yeah, let me do.
Okay, why don't you read, why don't you read each one and then we'll do a movement on all of them.
Okay, Kate Reed, select board representative to the safety committee, termed and June 30th, 2025. Elizabeth Lester, 161 Acton Street, is a member of the safety committee, termed and June 30th, 2026. Sasha Miyamuro, 85 Bellows Hill Road, is a member of the safety committee, termed and June 30th, 2026. Valerie Thaddeus, 779 North Road, is a member of the safety committee, termed and June 30th, 2026. And Brian Murph, oh, sorry, that's it, because the other one.
You're going to appoint yourself to, you're going to appoint yourself?
I, well.
I can do so moved.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're just going to do the safety committee on this first one.
I thought that we would keep that safety committee as one.
Great. So we have a motion to appoint those four positions to the safety committee, including Kate Reed.
Second.
Yeah, I do have a question though about the terms. They're all going to be ending in 2026.
No, there's a couple of 2025s.
No, there's only one 2025, that's the select board, because we think the select board should be every year since we kind of do it as a liaison thing. But I think the other terms maybe should be staggered so that not everybody goes off all at the same time.
That, that's fine, but I think we don't know when the, the first three we appointed, when do those end? Those may have been 2025. And look at the. So it's.
I don't know, yeah, okay, it might, but I just want to double check that it is.
It's a three-year term, is there a reason there only, are these replacing existing seats or why?
This is a brand-new committee we're setting up and normally, you don't want to have.
So why not give them a, a couple of them a three-year term instead of a two-year term?
Right, well, some, some should have one, some should have two and some should have three. So that you have them rolling through.
Yeah.
And the select board should always, and, okay, so I'll be.
But we also don't know the, the desire of the individuals in terms of their.
Their timing, they kind of.
Were they, when they applied, did they know what their term would be?
No, we had several months of trying to get this off the ground, so we were kind of just excited to have the, the people volunteer.
Generally, when people volunteer, and it's not like, like these are, you know, it's three years. Do they know how long they're going to be on?
No, most of these are first-time volunteers.
Right.
Well, they, yeah, I guess the charter wasn't in place yet, so I don't know.
Right.
They might know it's a three-year term or, is that existing? Was, was the current safety committee a three-year term that we?
Oh, God, no.
We can just leave it and fix it later. It's going to take us longer to fix it now.
At the first meeting, I will bring it up and I'll check about that and then I'll bring it back.
And if they have preferences, if someone says, oh, I'll just do a year, or someone says, I want to do three years, we can.
Well, yeah.
Then we can figure out.
We'll leave it to you to sort it out.
I'll sort it out later and let you know.
So we have a motion and I second it.
All right, so no more discussion, so let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed.
All right, so then I move to appoint Brian Murphy as the Conservation Commission's representative to the Conservation Restriction Advisory Committee, termed and June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion?
He's going to be busy because he's also on the LSC.
Right, right. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
All in.
Okay.
So we have, yeah, more Conservation Commission.
Oh. Oh, I already. I missed that, I didn't turn the page, sorry.
Seven more.
Okay, hang on. Meetings.
I think we just do them all here.
They seem in a weird order here.
Oh, yeah, okay, I move to appoint Helen Young as a Conservation Commission's representative to the Community Preservation Committee, termed and June 30th, 2025. And to also appoint her as a Conservation Commission's representative to the MBTA Communities Subcommittee, termed and June 30th, 2025. Move to appoint Susan Provenzano, 80 Mill Pond Lane, as a member of the Land Stewardship Committee, termed and June 30th, 2026. And to appoint Ken Hart, 64 Estebrook Road, as a member of the Conservation Restriction Advisory Committee, termed and June 30th, 2025. Move to appoint Kristy Nguyen, 125 Bellows Hill Road, as a member of the Cultural Council, termed and June 30th, 2027. And to appoint Laurel Lynn Roberts, 188 Judy Farm Road, as a member of the Cultural Council, termed and June 30th, 2027. And move to appoint Alan Gilden, 61 Estebrook Road, as a member of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, termed and June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. All right.
Thank you volunteers.
Yes.
Great to have a long list.
It is, we're getting better at this. I think, I do think this website, you know, online application form is helpful.
So now we're.
Where are we at overall, I mean, are, in the volunteer process, are we in a good place in terms of filling open seats? Or do we still have a lot of work to do?
Housing trust needs a couple.
It's not for, it's not for lack of trying, it's volunteerism at this point.
Yep.
All right, let's move on to the warrant, I believe.
Oh, yeah. I already got my, my.
Absentee ballot.
Absentee ballot, so we better get this done. I move that the select board vote to execute the warrant for the September 3rd, 2024 state primary as presented in the packet.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
So it's one day only voting?
Well, this is.
It's only a primary, I know, but.
This is just the warrant, so it just tells you what the.
Approved the early voting hours last meeting.
That was for the primary, not for the general?
Correct.
All right. So why is it the warrant, oh, the warrant says it's on Tuesdays. So the actual voting day is the September 3rd?
Yes.
Let's do that, that's, you know, GL is really tricky. Simon told me this, right? They put the primary the day after Labor Day.
Yeah.
Because they really want incumbents to.
Sure do.
Because, you know, people are not paying attention, they're coming back from holiday, they're getting ready, their kids ready and that favor's incoming.
The only contested one race on this is the register of dudes.
That's your buddy, right?
Yeah.
Well, you know, there's nothing we can do, except for.
You want to amend it?
I want to register my disapproval of the two nothing GL.
Okay, you have a motion on the table.
There's a motion, no, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, I'm going to pass this around for signature.
Good, climate leader now.
All right, yeah, and we will move on to the climate leader presentation. If you both want to come forward, that would be great.
Come on down.
Good evening.
Hey there.
Nice to see you guys. Ms. Reed has not had dinner yet. She's not had dinner yet, your stomach is complaining about.
I know, what can I say?
Your volunteer schedule.
Bring some snacks.
So, welcome. You guys are here to give us our climate leader presentation and I think we'll, we're angling towards a vote tonight, I think, on it.
That is the angle.
All right.
Yeah, the, the three remaining approvals that we need are, are on the table, so to speak. And I want to just jump to the climate, not the climate leader, the decarbonization roadmap, which is the first one, because not three minutes ago, I realized there's a typo. It says, move to resolve in favor of decarbonizing municipal buildings by 2025? I think that's a little soon. Supposed to say 2050, so I just want to jump, jump ahead of that and note that. I don't know how that affects the ability to vote on that, if it does at all.
It doesn't.
Okay, great. But I just want to make sure, not try to decarbonize in, you know, five months, so. But I, we, in the packet, is the final draft of the decarbonization roadmap. I know you guys saw more of the earlier draft of it a few weeks, months ago. So if there were any points there that stood out as you guys wanting to address it before approving it, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have some questions, but I don't know if you all. Do too.
Sure.
So, I was reading through, these are just kind of clarification questions and such, just so I better understand it. On table three, the summary of emissions reductions.
Yes.
How did you come up with those targets?
Yes, so I did those calculations using the percentage of current emissions that is calculated by Mass Energy Insight for all the town buildings that we have. So, for example, the police station right now makes up 4% of our emissions footprint. And say, we're, you know, we're electrifying the police station between now and 2027. That 4% went into that 8% calculation. And I could find the spreadsheet where I did all of it to exactly, you know, put together the numbers. So that's where the, the first line came from. The fleet calculations was more a fraction of vehicles, because we have, you know, 41 vehicles and then how many of those vehicles we would estimate would be converted to electric by certain benchmarks. It is split up into light and heavy duty. I believe it's like 22 light duty, 18 heavy duty, somewhere around there. So those were my denominators when I did those calculations. And in the 2050 column for the heavy duty, you'll see it doesn't hit 100, just because I, when I was doing the calculations, I kind of said, you know, might be nice or might make sense to assume that maybe not every single heavy duty vehicle is going to make it there and how does that affect our ultimate emissions reductions?[1775.94] And we're still in the, the green zone for what DOE is looking for, so I kept it. But that is, at that point, when you're thinking about 2050, where technology will be 25 years from now, it's, we're making estimations, you know.
Well, it occurred to me, it seems it's all kind of backend loaded, is the hockey stick.
Yeah, go ahead.
There are, there's guidance that the DOE has given in terms of trigger events. They are not looking for municipalities to switch out equipment before an end of life kind of event or building renovation event, or a new building. So we make some good faith estimates on the life of, of certain vehicles. We spend a lot of time with the school and members of the, of the MSC to understand for the buildings when the likely replacement might be for, you know, HVAC equipment. So we try to take that into account. And the heavy duty vehicles, for sure, will be at the, will be at the tail end. I mean, they're, you can buy full electric fire trucks today, but they are, you know, on the margin. I mean, they're like a, probably at least a factor of 1.5 over what a conventional fueled unit would be.
The, the charts, the tables that follow, table five and six and so forth, that's the, those little icons represent, I guess, the replacement schedule.
Yes.
And so does that, if I were to look at your spreadsheet, would, would that phasing tie numerically to those percentages? So you're, you're estimating, for example, in 2028, town hall needs a major something or other, and you're, you're making an estimation as to what that system would look like and how much it would contribute.
Yeah, table four also has it spelled out versus the visual. I included tables five and six because DOE provided us that worksheet and I thought it would look, it would be a nice example to put it in action, just to show it in different ways.
So what are those, like little T squares and?
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be like a construction crane, and then the other one is like a little building or maybe a management panel. I didn't come up with the icons. I will claim responsibility for that.
It looks like a brick building, it looks like Highland.
So Sarah, the, the one line that was confusing to me is line one, two, the second, the one right above the total on table three. Because I get the percentages, and then you've got this energy use intensity reduction.
Yeah, so they gave, that line, DOE kind of gave us those numbers. I think that's a harder thing to pinpoint when you don't know so far into the future.
Yeah, what are the units?
Yeah.
547 what?
EUI, EUI.
Flubblings.
Or is it, is it BTUs? It might be BTUs, the EUI. Do you know what units that's in? I feel like MEI just gave it to me in EUI. But part of me thinks it might be the British thermal unit.
But are we, let's say, in whatever units they are, we, we use 547 of them now and by 2050, we're going to use 164 of them? Is that kind of what that's in?
Basically, yeah, they, they.
The slope that's governed by those percentages.
Yeah, so they, they gave us those, like, the five and 25 is the benchmark, and then I kind of.
So is this like, okay, so you take care of your buildings in line one, and your vehicles in line two and three, and then your use, it's more of a use thing, like, I keep my house cooler.
I can, I can give one example that, that they have discussed. And the example is using heat pumps as an example, electricity driven heat pumps. You have air source heat pump, more or less conventional ground source, not terribly deep. And then you have deep well heat pumps, which have dramatically different efficiencies. And a deep well geothermal system would be an example of a, you're reducing the amount of energy. So you're decarbonizing for all three of them, right? But you are substantially reducing, using even less energy as you go to those very high efficiency events, but conversions.
Yes.
So that's the best example that I can give right now, that fits what they're looking for.
And the, the units for energy use intensity is energy over area. It's, it looks like kilo British thermal units, KBTU over square feet. So I think that's.
Per square feet of built environment?
For building.
Yes, of the buildings.
So it doesn't, it doesn't, for example, say we'll stop laying down asphalt and put down like.
No.
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 But, but it's the difference between, you know, the extreme example is, is heating with electricity, resistance heating all the way down to geothermal.
So this, this.
Dramatically reduce the amount of energy.
Profile and this path to zero is buildings and vehicles.
Yes.
Yes.
It's not, you know, I'm going to wear sustainable clothes.
No.
You can though.
And these numbers can also change. We are supposed to be updating it every three years. So as, you know, as events unfold, we're not bound to this final product.
And tables five and six, I'm, I'm sure this has been discussed, but I'm assuming that that generally maps with the capital plan, that these aren't in conflict, or this isn't an accelerated version. But reinforcing the point that made is that we replace things when they're due to be replaced versus early. Is that?
This does match the capital plan.
Good, good.
As known today.
Which has a finite, like a five year viewfinder, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
And following table seven are two pie charts, but they're not exactly the same, but I can't tell why.
The difference is that the second one has vehicles.
It's buildings plus vehicles?
Yes, the first one is just buildings. If that's confusing, I could.
It would be better to clarify. I mean, if you, if this is formulaic for the mass, whatever the.
Yeah, yeah.
And do it, do it their way, but for the public consumption, it is confusing.
That's a good point.
It was neat to kind of get so granular in some of the, no, I, I was really, you know, impressed by it. By all the, like, looking at the vehicles and seeing that, you know, the Tahos are not so bad when you compare them against the, you know, international roll off truck.
Trucks, trucks are tough.
Which is like massive compared to, you know, everything else. So if you're attacking this as a problem, those seem like, same with the school, the school has the biggest impact.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we said last time, buildings are twice as much.
Right, yeah.
Anyway, they got all the buildings in town, right?
And speaking of school, we did get the sign off from Jim on both the roadmap and the zero emission vehicle policy, which was the parts that they had to approve, so that's all sets.
So who was, besides us, who were you waiting for?
Just you guys.
One of the questions I had was relative to the finance committee. I mean, I, I think that, and I guess you already asked the question, but I was just curious about the, you know, the financial impact of these changes and, or of what we're doing. And finance committee reviewed it. You have a presentation you sent me offline, which I don't know if you wanted to share anymore.
Sure, we can, if people have questions, we can pull up the slides that we presented to the finance committee on July 18th. And we got their, I guess you could say verbal support, since they don't have a vote that DOE requires. There wasn't a vote, but in the meeting, they, they gave us their support to pursue this and other funding avenues that we find in the future.
I have noticed that Mark is, is on the, on the call.
Okay.
He might be able to speak firsthand.
Okay.
That's great. I don't know, Mark, if you have anything you wanted to add, you had seen this.
Yeah, you want me to say something? Do you want me to?
Well, if you want, we're just discussing this and they mentioned the finance committee had reviewed it.
Yeah, no, we, yeah, as, as was mentioned, we, we gave our approval verbally. I mean, there's no particular input, because the, the, the actual cost isn't known till till we under, till they find out what grants they might be able to win or not. So there's, there's a big range of what it might cost, and I think, so the financial implications just aren't actually knowable yet. So, but, but, you know, we had no issues with the plan. Over.
Okay, thank you.
I think it underscores an important point, is that we're setting a goal, we're setting a path, but we're just going to have to be practical and prudent as we go down it, as we encounter these projects of when it's time to invest in a greener technology, when it doesn't make sense, when it's time to, you know, there's, we're just going to have to use our good judgment along the way.
The vehicle plan's the one that I had kind of some questions on, because it really is prescriptive, saying you will put a, you will transition to electric, you know, as a high, I mean, immediately.
As a waterfall, right?
Well, there is, but there's a, they're accessible, so it's not, if, if the police chief said, I couldn't use this vehicle and does not work, then yes, you could, you could.
Well, that's what they would say. They're not going to say, I don't like it.
There's a, if I'm not mistaken, there's a full EV on the, on the capital plane, three years out?
Yes, the fire chief's truck.
That's one. I thought Chief Amidal, Amidola.
Correct, his as well, so that his mainline vehicle would be electric.
I would be happy to, to discuss some of the vehicle costs, because that's actually a very easy story to describe.
Perfect.
If Ryan could put up, or is, I'm not sure who's.
I have it.
Okay. It would be the document that Travis had sent you. Which was the presentation I made to the finance.
Is that the slide you're looking for? Light duty vehicle?
Um, yeah, it would be slide number, boy, I can't tell the slide numbers. Should say cost analysis, light duty vehicle, decarbon.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go. It's hard for me to look at that. That has a lot of vehicles up there, but we can cut right down to, so column A is just a, a straight gasoline explorer. I did column B at the very beginning to just look at the hybrid electric vehicles. The thing that's extremely important in this analysis is that police duty fuel economy is a leap, is very, very different from the EPA metric. So keep that in mind. I, I went into, there's some public websites, they're not on, footnote it here, but there's, you know, where Ann Arbor is the closest to what looks like Carlisle, and even Ann Arbor's not a Carlisle for sure, but the amount of idling has a dramatic impact on it. So what you see, that 8.7 and the 15.6 miles per gallon, for just those two show a significant, over the life of the vehicle, cost of, just to operate the fuel, so not maintenance and stuff like that. But it's a huge difference. It's like $18,000 differential between A and B.
Because you're idling, and when you're idling on a battery, it's not.
You're burning gas.
That's right, the whole, the operating mode for an electric vehicle flips the, the equation entirely the other way.
Although, to be fair, it doesn't, it really doesn't go back to the carbonization of generating the electricity that you use to charge.
Yeah, so, so.
It's like free energy, it's like you grab an electron.
Well taken. The, the assumption the state is making is that they're pushing the grid to, to decarbon.
Well, sure.
Right, so we have no control over that, so.
As we know, right? It's still more efficient, but it's not a pure zero like this.
Correct.
But in terms of money, dollars to the town, it's a savings.
Right, it's a big save, right, it's a big savings.
And you're not just burning gas.
Right, right.
Gasoline sitting there.
And there's enough, I mean, there's enough police departments that are using.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I haven't been in one, I haven't ridden in one, thank goodness.
Just embezzle some funds from, and we'll get your free ride.
No, I won't do that.
But is Chief Amidol, I mean, is he open to, is he expressed? Cautiously. So, for example, the last time I, I mean, I've had a few conversations with him, and the last time I understood that this Blazer from Chevrolet is, honest to goodness, I mean, it is high performance.
The EV Blazer.
Yeah, it's a, it's a police pursuit variated vehicle. You can charge it in, in something like 17 minutes for several hundred miles worth of range. I mean, these are, you know, level three charging and stuff. So from a performance perspective, no qualms at all. So they're just operationally, in the fleet, charging and everything else is what he wants to feel out. And what he described to me, and I'm not sure what the current plan is, but my last conversation is, he would then have one in, not for line duty for the officers, but he would take it as an administrative vehicle, just to get the, the feel of it.
It's a start.
Yeah, and, and that makes a lot of sense. And so I would say he's cautiously open to it, you know. And I don't think anybody expects that, that they would buy vehicles that are not from a manufacturer. I think they're looking for, you know, vehicles that are designed from the ground up to be, be police vehicles.
Right, so on that topic, the NYPD must, has a whole set of them.
Yeah, they, they did a lot of Mach-E for their, when they first launched, like, years ago, right? And they came out, so column C is the actual efficiency for for the Blazer. Three, four, and five is the range, that, they give a range of three to five in service for the, the Mach-E. And then the Mach-E is almost the same as a Blazer, if you look at the box at the bottom. You know, the vehicles are so similar in terms of drivetrain and efficiency. I felt pretty comfortable. So three, four, or five miles per kilowatt hour is that metric. And you can see that, you know, that column, the last column, where you're, you're looking at that midrange of four, it's a, it's a huge difference. It's a, you know, $30,000 differential in operating energy cost. Which more than offsets certainly a first cost premium.
So has New York NYPD gone heavy into electric?
Yes. And, and they're not the only ones. I mean, they're just.
It's coming. It's like, happening.
And it fits the profile of police duty very well, in terms of maintenance, performance, lifespan. You can, they can be in service longer, because you're not running the motor on idle.
There's not many parts to run.
And there's no, there are no pistons, there are no cylinders, there's no coil.
There's no, there's really no transmission.
There's no radiator leaks.
Did your setup costs get factored into this too? I know if you're going to do a charging.
Charging, so if you look at the next page, which is verb words, verbiage. So, the thing is, you, you do have infrastructure. It's hard to actually come up and predict what that cost, what that cost would be. However, there's a very high expectation that a lot of this would be subsidized by the state, even the utilities. There are programs that are out right now. We, we've met with, with companies that are, you know, they're in the business of putting these charging stations in, helping municipalities take advantage of the funding sources that are available even today. So one thing that's incumbent on us, the ESC supporting town staff, is to find all those and to help on the front end, you know, like, the minute that this gets signed, you know, even before the DOE does anything, DOE does anything, that we're out there continuing to beat the bushes for where the funds are to offset those first costs.
Great, are there any further questions? Timing here.
Okay.
Is there anyone who wants to make a motion?
I move to adopt the decarbonization roadmap for the Green Communities Divisions Climate Leaders Application for Certification as presented in the packet.
Second.
Okay, just as a point of further discussion, Barney Arnold, who couldn't be here, wanted to voice her strong support for this.
Thank you, Barney.
I mean, I, I think we've reviewed it, we've had a couple of meetings on it, we've, I actually, I, yeah. I, I think we've, we heard from anyone in the public, it seems like I've, I've talked to people and they've been, you know, a couple of people reasonably supportive, so, I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense to try and, you know. Sounds like it's a program that we can benefit from as a town.
I think it's the right thing to do, and I think it's the, it's the right time to do it, and I think we'll, we'll also then be, the recipients of more grants, because we've kind of gotten out in front of it. Yeah, just as we did with Green Communities, we have really, we, we didn't do anything through Green Communities, we wouldn't have done anyway. I don't think, we may have done them a little differently than we would have done, but we, we got subsidized with a lot of that, so that's why I think it's a good idea.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Okay, there's two more.
Okay.
Want to adopt, I move to adopt the zero emission vehicle first policy as presented in the packet.
How's that different?
It's, it's not the rom, decarbonization roadmap, it is a, it's a different thing, it's a policy.
Really committing to buying primarily electric vehicles.
When practicable.
When practicable.
So that's the policy piece.
It's the policy piece.
Yep, okay, I second that.
Okay, I, I guess, I didn't ask my question at the time, but we can, if it doesn't work, if something in this plan doesn't work, we can just not go forward and then we could potentially lose funding and we wouldn't be a, a climate leader community.
Well, Sarah, you said, we have to, we sign it, we raise our hand that we're on board, and then we can get grants on that basis, right?
Yes, and there's a recertification process, so in three years.
We're going to take a look at how you're doing.
Yeah.
There's no penalty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And my guess is that if we're struggling with something, all towns are going to be struggling with the same thing, and so they'll have to adjust accordingly.
All right, so there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I.
None opposed.
Move to resolve in favor of decarbonizing municipal buildings by 2025.
2050.
2050.
Oh, sorry, by 20, sorry, you know, you said that and I. But I didn't have a pencil to write it on. In accordance, so, I'm going to restart that over again. Move to resolve in favor of decarbonizing municipal buildings by 2050, in accordance with the Carlisle Master Plan.
Second.
Any further discussion?
That's, so is that the doer, is that backed up by a document? Or we just make that resolution? Because there's two letters.
Yes.
Which are the first two we just voted on, right?
Well, the first thing we voted on was this whole thing with all these charts and everything, that was the decarbonization plan.
Right, but the thing is, the letter is the thing that gets signed.
This letter.
There's a letter that says, we sign, and.
You guys or Brian?
Or Brian, but it says select board members and/or chair, mayor, town manager, so.
Okay.
So that letter, which is fifty-eight in the packet, I presume.
Yeah, that's for the roadmap.
We, that's for the roadmap, then you have that document, you say, you wave it in front and say, we've done that. And then similarly, there's a letter, the second letter is the letter that says we adopted the policy, which we just did.
Right.
So it's another one, you wave around.
Yes.
And then is the third one, this resolution, that's where we're voting.
DOE R, yeah. So we're voting that rip.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. But we don't, it's just a resolution.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed.
All right, cool, thank you guys so much.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you for, oh my god.
Good job. Congratulations on how the real work began.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, there's a team.
Well, it sounds like, it looks like it's a good teams. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good one.
Thanks, you too. All right, moving right along.
Not too bad, only ten minutes.
Treasurer or collector, so, we're gonna have a discussion about a couple of.
TRCO. TRCO, I just need to find it here.
So, page sixty-one.
I always do them by.
Thank you.
Are you still doing the individual thing?
Yeah.
The resolu.
I think, I think it's easier.
Treasurer collector presentation.
He didn't know where it was, I knew where it was.
So, we have a couple of things to discuss tonight. Ryan, are you taking this or?
It looks like.
Sandy and I are on.
All right.
I'm here, I'll speak.
Terrific.
Hi, Sandy.
Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
For some reason I can't get the video to come on my laptop.
Uh-oh.
So, I'm sorry.
That's okay, we like hearing you.
Okay, good. Good. So, I am here to talk about the select board putting on the special town meeting warrant this fall for, to accept the provisions of chapter two hundred A, section nine A of the Mass General Laws, which would allow the funds of any uncashed payroll checks or accounts payable checks to stay in the town. The way the process works now is that after a three-year period of following the issuance of the checks, we try to find the person, try to get the check reissued to them, that's the ultimate goal. However, after that three-year period, they get moved over to the state's mass unclaimed property division. And they become the state's property, and they end up on the list, and they try to find the property owner that way. Whereas, this would change it, it would stay within the town, we would give them a year to try to cash the check. If after that one-year period, we would try to find the owner, try to get the check reissued. If that doesn't work, then the funds are eventually transferred to the general fund for the town to reuse.
It's one of them to me.
So, to me, it seems like a no-brainer, but.
Yeah, plus, you know, you give it to the state, we lose the funds, we lose the interest on it, we lose the use.
I didn't realize, so we've been losing, like Kelly's been, you've been chasing all these tailings, have they all gone back to the state?
So far, no.
Oh, good.
Kelly, what's the magnitude of it, like, how much, how many dollars are we talking?
Right now, I believe we're somewhere between thirty and forty-five thousand dollars.
That's a hefty change.
It was quite a bit higher, but Sandy and I have been working to get several checks reissued, which has been a successful process so far. We've been able to connect with many vendors, you know, old payroll checks was a, was a tough one, you know. Before we transitioned to direct deposit, a lot of live checks were issued, so if you had, you know, say a recumbent kid that worked one week, and they misplaced their check, they may not have turned around to come looking for it. So those are kind of the, the people we were hunting down, so to speak.
All right, so what you're saying, Kelly, is that people were owed the money, and for a variety of reasons, they didn't have, they lost the check or whatever. So you've actually paid people what they, what we owed them to clear that.
So even if it was an old check, we would weigh the check and then do a reissuance.
But now we're at the really can't finds, and we wanna get, if we're gonna claw back that money, we'd like it to claw back to Carlisle.
Exactly.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
One question. In, in the section nine A, there's, there's a bunch of steps that we as Carlisle will have to take to reclaim those in terms of posting in the paper, there's a, there's a bunch of stuff in there. Are, are we comfortable doing all that? Does that seem reasonable to you guys or whomever will be doing it?
We are, and we have actually been, we've kind of been following the guidelines of chapter two hundred A, section nine A, because our personnel, our, our financial policies, we adopted a financial policy on tailings back in the spring of twenty-four, and those follow along these guidelines. So Kelly and I have been, it's been on the Carlisle website, the payroll tailings were, as well as, we kind of did both, we actually did mailings as well, and we've managed to recover or, or reissue about ninety percent of what was outstanding on our payroll tailings at this time. So, we really had a great response. Fortunately, a lot of the people were still employed, or at least were able to be located, people knew of that, where they were, and we could get them to get the checks reissued to them.
Okay.
All right.
And I'd point out, if, if my memory is correct, that, that was a, that was a flag in the audit report, right?
That's right.
They want us to do a better job, and now we've done a better job, or, not we, they.
Yes, yeah, and now we, my goal is, in the next few weeks, to start on, there's a whole list of vendor checks that we need to start addressing as well, so that's, that's the next one.
All right, so you don't need a motion, we're just gonna, put that on the warrant?
Yeah.
Great. Next is the proposed change in the tax billing, bill mailings?
Correct. So currently, we've adopted a four-quarter tax billing process, so they're due every quarter, and we mail every quarter. Many municipalities now just do two mailings, even though they're sticking to the quarterly due dates. So, in your packet was a sample of a tax bill, instead of the tax bill having a taxpayer portion of the same tax bill and a remittance copy of the same tax bill. This example shows that there are two coupons, one for the payment that's due on August first, one for the payment that's due on November first. It, it is very clear, it gives the taxpayer the option of paying both payments at once. And many taxpayers request to pay their bills ahead of time, especially in Carlisle, lots of people are on vacation or holiday when bills become due.
So, Sandy, thanks for pointing that out. So the, I was thinking this was Back to the Future, but it's not, right? In the old days, well, in the Larry Barton days, I think we moved to quarterly.
We went from, by.
We were only invoicing a half a year at a time. You're still, actually, it's still four payments, you're just reducing your mailings and giving people the option to prepay, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, Larry Barton day, we only got two bills and paid it half and half.
Right, so that was a cash flow, this is better cash flow, right? There's gonna be a lot better cash flow if people prepaid, right?
Yeah.
Very good.
The quarterly tax billings allow for a better cash flow within the town.
Right, I agree, yeah, I agree. Yep, okay.
But, the, the quarterly billings take up a lot of time. On my part and Brian's part, our assessor in comparing those and getting them to the printer, there's costs involved in the printer. Of course, the price of postage is outrageous. So this would save the town of Carlisle some money as well.
Okay.
Great, so, I move to reduce, oh, sorry.
I, I just wanna, I'm sure there's gonna be initial confusion. I'm sure other towns have gone through this, especially when they see the total preliminary tax number that's twice what they're used to seeing. I'm assuming this example is a standard format that other towns have used in terms of the sequencing of information, leading with the later due payable date, followed by the earlier due and payable date. I just wanna make sure we're not doing anything differently than what has already been implemented elsewhere. And that, when we do this, there will be, I think you mentioned there'll be a mailer that is clear to people about what's going on here.
That was my question, you.
Someone's probably breached them.
Yes, we will definitely include a mailer with, the first time that we do this. And we, we will put it out there as much as possible on the website, we will put it in the mosquito, we will.
So, so you can detach the most current one first.
Yeah, I assume so.
Make the people aware of it before it happens, even, so that, and yes, there's gonna be confusion, there's going to be people who forget to pay their second quarter bill, but there again, we hope to put reminders out there as much as we can so that people are reminded. But, as I also mentioned, about half of the town's tax bills are paid through the mortgage companies, or they pay through our online service, which also reminds them when tax bills are due again, so.
And is there any option, like as someone whose bill is paid through a mortgage company, to not get a mailing? Like, I don't need a physical mailing, and I, is there any paperless option, or are we required to send?
Unfortunately, the law states we have to send the bill to the homeowner.
Yep, okay.
The only thing I will say is that in this, the world we're headed in, e-billing is an option, it is legal, so that is something, we would have to create a database of everybody's email addresses in, to do that, so that is something that, you know, I hope to look into in the next year or two, and maybe start to be able to, because there are several people who have requested e-bills, which, you know, we can send them out to one and twos, but to make it worthwhile, it would be great if we could email a couple hundred people their tax bills, you know.
So, is this one of the things, like your bank always sends you, like, go paperless? Like, you would take a box, you, you would take a box and provide your email, and you would just stop the paper, or, you don't, in other words, you don't have to, it's not statutory that everybody has to get a paper copy, or everybody has to get an email copy, right?
No, no, we can do some of both.
So let me ask you a couple, just, you know, mechanical questions. Are you gonna provide two envelopes in the packet with the two bills? Well, no, I mean, some people who.
That's a good question.
Because right now, you have an envelope, which again, I don't use either, because I have a mortgage with a prepaid. And then the other question, because you say you can go online, but whenever I've gone online, it's pretty expensive. It seems a lot cheaper to go to, you know, down into the town hall and give you a check. But, that's a third-party service, right? Is it Unipay?
So, I hadn't thought about the two envelopes, but I can certainly inquire into that.
Those old people.
As far as online payments go, if you have it taken out of your checking account, it's only fifty cents.
Okay.
Which is cheaper than a stamp these days.
Right, okay.
It's, it's a credit card payment that will cost.
Yeah, the credit card, okay, that's the one that'll cost.
Yeah.
But that's not in our control, that's the third-party service.
That's Unipay.
Yeah, okay, which, that tells to the next discussion, yeah.
All right, so, I move to reduce mailings of tax bills from four times per year to two times per year in the manner described in the proposed change in tax bill mailings memo included in the packet.
Effective when?
What was it in the?
I think we've been signing.
I haven't put an effective date in, I was thinking if we had them effective for January, the January mailings. So in January, two coupons would be mailed, the January, the bill due February first, the bill due May first, would be in that one. Either that or we can start.
So, so those are the back two of this fiscal year, right?
Yeah. Okay, so you wanna add that in?
Effective, January first.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a voice vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, we're gonna do it.
All right. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So there's one more topic I'm gonna bring to your attention tonight, and that is that we've received requests from the cultural council to implement online donations through our Unipay system. That is, I've, I've looked, there are other towns that do it, some have just one online donation account line, others have up to eight different donations that, that you can donate to. This has not been done in Carlisle before, so I also would have some questions about how we implement this whole thing. I guess my, my concerns would be, if we do this for the cultural council, do we do this for all the boards, committees? How do we go about regulating this, deciding who is allowed? To, you know, have online donations, who isn't? You know, looking at other towns' websites, I've seen everything from boards, committees, to donations for a two-hundred-and-fiftieth town anniversary, or a parade, things like that, so there are many different options.
Sounds like once we start, we kind of open the.
Mark's online too. Mark's online, and I spoke with, I had a conversation with Mark about this. I mean, right now, first of all, we have, we have some groups that are part of the town, right? We have, we have certain groups that are kind of their own thing, there are other groups part of the town, like the cultural council. And right now, you know, to donate, it's a check. You have to write a check, you have to drop off a physical check, and quite honestly, that's just not how I operate anymore, and it's not how most places operate. And we don't see a ton of donations, or even awareness for a lot of these organizations. So I know there's potentially logistic hurdles that we have to overcome, but I think as a town, this is something we should have a goal to do, and we can work out the details and figure out where the roadblocks are and get it out of the way, but, you know, I think we should identify which, which groups in town this would be appropriate for. And I was looking at the town of Hingham, they have two, four, six, they have eight in a, a single page, you pick the one. And I know on the backend, we have to figure out, it goes into account, how does it then get to the right place? But, I mean, I think as a town, we should move to doing this as part of just the modernization of town hall, and as volunteerism falls down, people tend to write more checks and give more donations. So I think this is a good way to publicize these groups, to get more donations. It gives them an opportunity when they're doing an event to just have a QR code that someone can scan, that can bring them right to the website if they wanna make a donation. So, I know we don't have the answers today, but I think it's something we should, we should really push forward.
Yeah, I agree, I think, Sandy, and you and I had this conversation a few. I think, um, Sandy, and you and I had this conversation a few months ago. You, you have, you know, you talk about the fee, we were mentioning the fee for Unipay before. But who cares, right? I mean, it's incremental money that you're facilitating, and if some of it has to go to transaction, that's, it's no mailing, so right now we get historical or old home day, they gotta make a paper mailing and like.
Right.
You were saying Scott, you know, they write a check or, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. A lot of those, Pan Mass Challenge, you get to pay or.
Do we also, I mean, I do most of my donations through fidelity charitable.
Push a button.
And you can input anybody you want, and they'll create it for you, right?
Yeah.
Do you know whether, does anybody know whether?
Donor advised funds.
Yeah.
There, there's no way for us, for our little groups to get donor advised funds either.
Yeah. This is the easier way, right, yeah.
Okay.
That's a whole nother issue.
That's a whole nother issue. But I don't see much downside. I, I agree with.
I mean, I, I see that there's probably extra work in the, uh, next door than the, you know,
Right.
for, uh, both Kelly and Sandy. But on the other hand, um, maybe we can make it, you know, streamline it so it's not onerous and so that we can start bringing in those funds.
And depending, we could do a pilot program, we could start with the cultural council or one or two, see how it goes. If we do think that there's, the workload is exponential or linear with the number of groups, then we would, we can really consider how many groups. If it's not that onerous, um, I, I think giving, and promoting it on the website, so you have an online bill pay button and a donate to Carlisle button.
Right.
Yeah.
I think would, it would be really interesting to see if that generated more donations. 'Cause I know Mark was telling me, like, if you look at the cultural council, you just don't see that many donations coming in because it's very hard to do. It's, if you're at an event, who's carrying checks around anymore?
Me, as for.
Mark, I don't know if you just wanted to say anything on this point.
I don't care, I actually don't care, thanks.
Mark Levitin.
Can you do a Venmo?
Yeah, I didn't say a lot. Uh, you know, it's just our role in, uh, in the town and the community, um, is essentially to re-gran money to, uh, cultural, uh, producers, and some of those are part of town governments, and many are not, um, in order to create programs for the benefit of our residents. That's really our mission, and that's why we are, uh, sort of upfront on this. Because, uh, there is an appetite for more funding, um, and across the board, which we were able to prove through, uh, the, um, uh, rating to the cultural council of sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in ARPA funds. That allowed us to really bring up the whole level of activity. And this is across the board, there's just more people creating more things. So, you know, I don't, this isn't where we're gonna split hairs and decide who gets to have the service or not, I understand that. But this is why we're upfront here to do it, because ARPA's gone, we're gonna, we have a lot of things that we wanna continue to do, especially the music festival, and we have, uh, several things that we're working on right now, including hopefully, uh, this, uh, in order to significantly raise funds, um, and create, uh, the, the environment that, that our residents seem to, to like. So, as, as far as, you know, we've done fundraising, I'll just make this part of it brief. Uh, we, we've done one-to-one fundraising, uh, in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-three. That means that every council member took, you know, fifteen to twenty of the people they go in town and sent them a personalized letter, uh, explaining what we do and how we plan to use money. Um, and the first time out, we had nineteen donors and received seventeen hundred and forty-five dollars. Last year, aside from a very large donation, we had nineteen donors and thirty-five hundred dollars. And I think what happened there was the evidence of what we're delivering to the town. So we need the money and that we will use it, and we will grant it to a lot of different people in this town. And, uh, you know, I hope we can at least be the pilot for this.
Great, thanks, Mark. I see Christina's got her hand up, you have a quick comment? Christina?
I, I do thank you so much. I just wanted to make a comment that, um, the ESC has actually had to turn down offers of donations because there was no way for, um, the committee to accept it. Um, so, uh, I would say that, that, uh, we would, you know, I would think support, uh, being able to, to accept donations. Thank you.
Sure. All right, well.
And I'm happy to work on this, um, and work with Ryan and whoever, if there's any additional support needed to investigate and figure out and bring recommendation back to the select board.
You're hired.
Yeah.
I would like to recommend that, um, that we start with some type of pilot and that we bring you the parameters of that pilot before it's proved tonight, just so that you can see what it'll look like.
Yeah.
I, I do think that a flood of people will be coming to you and managing that might be something you wanna consider.
I'd like to get, and I'd be curious to see the list of groups that would potentially come to us in terms of our town. They're within the town, they're not external to the town, they're within the town.
So on that, I mean, that's a, a council question, right? So, like, if you're Gleason Library, it creates Friends of Gleason Library, and it's a five-oh-one-C-three. It becomes its own thing, right?
Yeah.
Can a town have, like, like, give me the example of the, we have this tax abatement, there's a, it's one of the checks I write, I think it, it used to be anyway, the, through the town, you could write a check to, for tax abatement for elderly, or.
Oh, really?
Or, isn't that, wasn't, or, there used to be a thing you could donate to. Is that not here anymore?
You can donate to the cultural council, you just have to write.
Right.
So how does it work legally? Forget all the mechanics of the check and all that, but, like, it's not a five-oh-one-C-three, so how does it accept money?
So the town.
One-seventy.
So, so the town.
Some other numbers.
So the town through the select board or an appointing board can accept a gift?
Right, but we have to, each time we have to, like, vote through.
We still do.
So we would have to vote to accept these?
Yeah, we'd have to get into the details of the mechanics of bulk acceptance and, but all gifts have to be accepted.
Right. Okay, which is, as compared with a, well, Mark just gave a, some IRC statute or something, I don't know what the one-seventy is.
Oh, I, I mean, it's disappointing, right? Says you can give a gift to the town and it, it could be tax deductible. However, in this environment, that's less attractive to people.
Well, it's not so much, yeah, I agree, it's not the.
The town cannot receive donor advised funds.
Right.
Uh, because it's not a five-oh-one-C-three. And that's why the Friends of Library and Friends of Council on Aging exist, you know, partly.
But you can't have Friends of Carlisle.
We're considering doing that for the cul- cultural council, or looking at, uh, community foundations that will serve the same purpose. But this is simply, uh, to, you know, be able to have people, as Scott said, you're at an event, scan a QR code, put it right, right in the right account in the accounting system.
So, so I think tonight, we want, we wanna just say, we have a desire to do this. Let's take it offline and worry, and figure out how, as you said, the mechanics, some of the limitations, some of the obstacles, and bring it back.
Just to be clear, that the, there, there is no problem right now accepting gifts in the town in check form. That can be done, and we don't discourage that. The difference here is the online donation.
Right.
But I, we've never, in my time here, we've never had a motion to accept a hundred-dollar check from Joe Blow to the, so how does it get, how is the gift accepted? If you say we always have to accept the gift.
Uh, you, you do have emotions where we accept gifts, unless the mechanism has been set up.
We've done that. I, in my years here, I've never.
Well, we did, just, just from the McMorris.
Accepted it. Yeah, twenty thousand dollars for the thing, I get it, but.
Well, we had a thousand dollars from Sandy Nash.
Right. But some people are probably writing fifty-dollar checks to the cultural council. We have never had that, is there, have you ever had that? I've never sat here and, and accepted a fifty-dollar donation to the cultural council. But yet, somebody wrote a check.
That's part of the problem.
So, I'm confused.
So these are things we have to clean up?
Yeah. So you're saying we may not be doing it right presently, regardless of online or whatever?
I don't think we're violating a lot, but we're definitely not in best practice with everything, unless mechanisms have been set up to allow, and it's not always the, this board, it could be given to the council on aging, or it could be given to other boards.
And one last mechanical question. So, uh, Sandy, you know, you indicated, and we talked about the fees, the Unipay fees. So if I give a hundred dollars to cultural council through the credit card, the cultural council gets ninety-five and Unipay gets five, right? It's not like the town has charged, like, five bucks, right? It's just taken off the gift, is that the theory?
No, um, how it works is if you wanna give a hundred-dollar donation, um, they will charge you a hundred and five dollars.
Ah, okay, okay.
Okay.
But, but the town doesn't get, okay, I get it.
You don't get a bill.
The town doesn't get, no, it goes right. Unipay keeps those fees.
Right, and, and there's an A, in the Hingham one, there's an ACH option, and as you say, fifty cents. And down in your, in your narrative in paragraph three, you say, Unipay uses two bank accounts, and then you list a whole bunch of things that goes, like, why two, and I don't, why is that?
Well, currently, we've used two, we're using, we just split and, um, everything was going into one account.
Yeah.
And now we've just split it into two accounts to make it easier, um, to separate taxes from all the other, um, things that Unipay, um, is used for because the, to balance that account at the end of the month was atrocious. Um, so this has made it easier for us to, um, figure out, um, accounting-wise. So, I, I just put in the option of opening a third account.
So, there's a lot of. Yeah, I'll, I'll.
All right.
There's a lot of details that, I'm sure go behind this.
So, I think it's, I think this board, I know we do have to move on, 'cause we have another presentation,
Yeah.
but I think we're generally supportive of this and wanna try this as a, as you said, Ryan, as a kind of a pilot program. And let's see, you know, what, what happens. And, and if there are kinks or things we need to work out, we'll do that. And, and then figure out the costs, and if it's taking, you know, exorbitant amount of time and we're not getting a value from it, we can revisit that, but.
Yep.
Is that kind of the sense of the board?
Yeah.
Okay. Absolutely. Is that good?
Good. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sandy and Kelly.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving.
Thank you.
Yep, moving right along, sorry, we're a little late on our next agenda item. So, um, we're going to be talking, uh, actually to the town planner, who's, can come forward and.
Addie.
And, yeah, oh, is Addie, yep, she's doing a presentation as well.
Great.
Which one?
The, um, accessory apartment bylaw is what we would like to start with, in case it's top of mind for some of you who were at the hearing last night. And so this one, um, it's important to note, the planning board is within their public hearing process, so I'm their envoy. I'm here to gather feedback and input, but nothing can be deliberated outside of their public hearing process. So I will bring all your comments back to them.
We cannot deliberate.
Um, the planning board cannot have a dialogue with you about.
We can deliberate among ourselves.
Right, for sure, and provide feedback and input to me. Um, so, this is, uh, the presentation that I gave to the planning board last night. It's modified slightly from the one that was in your packet, 'cause I did a little research. Next slide, please. Okay, so planners, um, view the accessory dwelling unit or accessory apartments as kind of the Swiss Army knife of housing policies, just because there's so many things that can be accomplished with accessory apartments. You can optimize the use of large single-family homes, repurpose accessory structures, preserve historic structures. Kids can move out, elders can stay and age in place, they can provide for onsite caregiver housing, multi-generational living. Um, and, you know, all these things kind of fit within the category of diversifying housing options, um, and housing equity and affordability. So, next slide, please. So the purpose of the zoning bylaw amendments that are being considered right now. Some of you may be aware that the governor signed the Affordable Homes Act last Tuesday, and it includes a provision for accessory dwelling units. This is something that we knew was coming, um, and the planning board discussed, you know, at various stages throughout the discussions of our local bylaw, and they decided to just keep going with changes to the local bylaw and kind of see what happened at the state level. And, and then a couple months ago, when it looked like this, the, um, what was proposed, uh, in the law might become effective, the planning board decided to try to align the bylaw with the, the changes they were making, kind of with the state law and kind of get ahead of, um, what's coming. So some of the things that are in the state law, um, it's pretty, it, it doesn't include a lot right now. It's, it's, it's a couple, like, you know, large state law paragraphs. So there's a definition of accessory dwelling units. They require that towns allow, um, accessory dwelling units by right, and so that would be a process change. They restrict us to only requiring one parking space for accessory apartments, so we can't, we can't require more than one, people can provide more than one. And then we cannot require owner occupancy of either the principal single-family home or the accessory apartment. And then we can restrict the use of accessory apartments as short-term rentals. So there's so, those are some of the highlights of the state law. And then another, the, the real reason the planning board is looking at adjusting the accessory apartment bylaw before the kind of state law came down the pike, was to clarify and simplify the requirements. So they were having trouble kind of figuring out some of the wording, some of the, there were references to terms that weren't defined. There was some paragraphs in the current bylaw that were kind of using conflicting terminology. We were having trouble guiding applicants and also enforcing things. And then we were finding that over time, as planning, the planning board changed membership, things weren't being applied kind of fairly across applications. So, the current bylaw has provisions for both accessory apartments and affordable accessory apartments, but it has different gating requirements and to be able to do those. So one of the things was like, why do these, what gating requirements differ? Let's combine them, consolidate them, um, and align them, right? So that there's the same kind of requirements apply if you wanted to do an accessory apartment or an affordable accessory apartment. Um, and then they included some, um, architectural considerations and environmental considerations. And the other kind of big change is that they wanted to simplify the method used to calculate the size of an accessory apartment. So the current bylaw has kind of three different metrics that applicants have to navigate. Percentages and, and looking at what's currently on the, the land and figuring out based on that what they can do. And it's a bit, it's a bit tricky. So, so those are those, that's the purpose of.
So this, this slide, though, Julie, is the state, right? This is what Governor Haley signed, was all these things?
No, so on the left, the left-hand column is some of the things that are in the state law that the planning board wanted to align with.
Okay, so the right-hand side is what, is our bylaws seeking to.
Right, exactly, yep. Next slide, please, Ryan. So, um, there are ways in which the proposed Carlisle bylaw will differ from state law. So, the maximum size of an accessory apartment, currently in town, we allow twelve hundred square feet, the state law says nine hundred. So we, the planning board was considering adopting the definition of accessory dwelling unit that the state has, but the, the one piece that would be different would be the size of the accessory apartment that's allowed. And then the number of accessory apartments on the lot. So the state provides for, the first accessory apartment up to nine hundred square feet is allowed by right, but then if, if we wanted to allow a second one, that would be a special permit process. Currently, Carlisle only allows one accessory apartment per lot, and that's not proposed to change. And then the state is silent on affordability in this provision. So, um, we currently have provisions in our bylaw for affordable accessory apartments, and those are proposed to stay. No one's utilized that section of the bylaw, but it's possible that incentives, um, and policies might change in the future that would make that something that would be of interest to people. Um, and so they felt like it did no harm to just keep that language in the bylaw.
So when our, when our Carlisle bylaw differs from the state law, our bylaws override the state law?
You're allowed to differ in certain ways, right? So we follow what they require, and then there's some provisions that we have that they're silent on.
If it couldn't go smaller, we couldn't say the maximum is eight hundred square.
Right.
Right.
But we could say bigger, we could say you can have an extra part.
The state said we're allowing a second accessory apartment by special permit, we can say no?
So we, so that's just a provision they have in the law if towns wanted to have, allow more than one accessory apartment on the lot. That's not something we're required to do.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. Okay, so there are some noteworthy changes to the Carl, that are proposed to Carlisle's bylaw. First and foremost is moving the process from a special permit process, which is discretionary, which means that the planning board has the ability to deny them, um, to a site plan review process. Some important things to note, to note about this, though, are that procedurally here in Carlisle, the planning board treats the process the same, right? So there's a legal ad, there's notification due of letters, and there's a hearing. What's absent from the site plan review process is the ability to deny. So the planning board has to approve by right uses that come in for a site plan review. They can approve them with conditions, they can reasonably regulate them, but they cannot deny them.
So in other words, if, if you own a house and you wanna make accessory and you need those nine hundred square feet and parking space and all that jazz. which presumably is in site plan review, they can't say no.
Right.
And Bader Aziz Zan says, I don't want noisy neighbors, too bad, right?
Right, and there, there is still an appeal process for site plan review. Not all towns allow for an appeal process for site plan review, but you have it in your bylaw. Um, and so that, that is something that applicants can also do. And then another change is that currently there's a limit on the number of bedrooms per accessory apartment, the limit is two, and that this, the proposal here is to change it so that it, the number of bedrooms would be equal, equal to or less than the number of bedrooms in the principal, single-family home. And just as a side note, you know, as is current practice, like, nothing that is proposed here changes the fact that the bedrooms are really subject to Title V and local Board of Health design flow requirements, right? So, currently that's the case, and that will remain the case. And then we would be, the third thing here, the third column, is we'd be removing the owner occupancy requirement that we currently have, and that's in line with the state law, the state law will not allow us to have an owner occupancy requirement. And then we also believe that we will not be able to have a cap on the overall number of accessory apartments. Currently there's a cap of seventy-five, twenty-five of them are allowed to be detached. But with a by right use, typically you can't have a cap.
That's townwide? Did we say seventy-five?
Townwide, we allow seventy-five townwide.
Two, we've got two in twenty years. Um, so, Julie, in the middle column, there's no requirement, like, if you're gonna have a two-bedroom, double A, you have to have a bathroom or a kitchen, there's no requirement of that?
You have, for it to be an accessory dwelling unit, it has to have a bathroom and a kitchen.
It does, okay, so that's somewhere we're not seeing, but that's, that's at the state and the town.
Yes. Yep, that's. Right, yeah, that's what constitutes a housing unit, yeah.
Okay.
Partly.
So if you wanna create a bedroom in your garage for your mother-in-law, and have her trundle back to the house for the bathroom, you can do that right now, you don't need to.
Um, I, I mean, I don't know if the absence of a bathroom would technically mean that it is an accessory apartment, um, but. Right, I, I, I think I kind of see what you're saying. Uh, that's a question for John Matipia, how he would look at that.
Well, if you're gonna open it up, if you're gonna open it up to lots of people, there may be those kind of questions, like.
And also, if you're gonna turn your garage. Right.
I don't wanna build a kitchen, like a bathroom maybe, but why am I building a kitchen? She'll come eat with us at dinnertime.
Right, yeah, and I, it's probably fine, as long as it meets building code requirements and Board of Health requirements.
But will it be called an accessory apartment?
No, it would not be called an accessory apartment.
It's just some other improvement you're doing.
Right, yeah.
And, and you still have to go to the Board of Health, because you're adding a bedroom.
Right, Title V, yeah.
Right.
Next slide, please. I think there's more, yeah, okay, and then there's some other changes, just to, the first one is, um, right now we require two parking spaces for an accessory apartment, and we won't be able to with the state law, we can only require one, um, people can provide more than one. And, and then, the restriction on the use as a short-term rental, sorry, for the sort of question.
Yeah, what is a parking space, like, not in this, we're not in the city, like.
Yeah, I mean, usually it's like ten by twenty or nine by eighteen, you don't have to stripe it usually, but it's enough pavement to accommodate a vehicle.
My driveway can accommodate three cars and.
Yeah, and I suppose it doesn't even have to be pavement, it could be a paver system, right?
Concomit prefer it there, you know, previous payers.
Yeah, probably. Better that way.
Neighbors law.
Just some sort of like off-street ability for people who are using the accessory apartment to park. Um, and then the restriction on the use as a short-term rental, so, um, this is something the state allows us to do if we want it. The planning board, at one of their meetings recently, expressed interest in doing that. Short-term rentals have a depressing effect, uh, they, they reduce the amount of housing stock available at an affordable rate, so they can have an impact on affordability across town. We do have short-term rentals in town, um.
You do?
What is short-term? How, how is that defined?
Usually it's, it's less than thirty days.
Airbnb.
There's a, there's a state definition, and I'll get that, because I need, I'll, I'll need to refresh my memory on it.
Okay.
But, yeah, so it's like Airbnb, VRBO, things like that, right? So they can have kind of a, an impact on the ability for someone to actually live in an accessory apartment, like, year-round, at maybe a, a more affordable price point.
On the other hand, it could allow the person in the larger house to be able to afford the taxes, because they're renting out their accessory apartment.
Exactly, so there's.
This was pointed out last night, that there was, there is no bylaw or any restriction against it currently, and so if you were gonna put it on just accessory apartments, it's unusual that you wouldn't have it on your primary residence as well. But those are things the planning board is thinking about.
Yes. It's an excellent.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Can you restrict short-term rentals on primary residences as well?
Yeah, sometimes have restrictions on short-term rentals, yeah, we don't, we don't have one in Carlisle. So it's, it's a kind of opening up a whole nother can of worms, um, and it's a whole conversation the planning board needs to have.
And this restriction, this isn't based on the legislation that was recently passed, this has always been around, the state law part of it? Or is that something that was just enacted last week? The restriction on, state allows restriction on?
The state's allowing a restriction on short-term rental, a use of accessory apartments as short-term rentals, I, I assume that a town could have done that before now. You know, some towns have just town-wide bans on short-term rentals, so that would, seems like it would also apply to accessory apartments, but it's a great question.
But we don't have that right now.
We do not, no.
And so is that, is the planning board taking that up as its own issue, like?
Uh, not to my knowledge, I mean, if, if, they're probably going to discuss it further because of this.
I mean, if they restrict it double A, they're gonna, you're, I think I'm hearing, they may have to make it.
Yeah, probably need to consider it a little more broadly than just this, if they wanna go ahead with it in here, yeah. And then site plan, the, another change here is that, like, currently with the special permits, they, they get renewed when a property changes hands, but with a special, with a site plan approval, they tend to run with the land, not the owner. And so some of the language about permit renewals, um, and just like what happens to tenants who are, you know, in the accessory apartment when a property changes hands, um, will need to change. Next slide, please. Um, so, just a little background on, um, like, detached accessory apartments in Carlisle. So they became allowed in twenty seventeen at town meeting. And since then, there's been ten applications, um, as of last night, actually, nine have been permitted, and one is pending. And largely, they've been in existing structures, right? So seven out of the ten are in existing structures.
Meaning it was ready to go, and they just got it, like it already existed, the bedrooms of absolutely kitchen.
Right, it might have been a garage that was repurposed, or a barn, or veterinary hospital, so it got approval.
How did it get there without approval though, prior?
These got approval.
So these, these were applied for.
No, I mean, I say differently. Let's pick the first one, patch metal, like, if it existed already, how did it get to be existed?
The structure existed.
It was a garage, and they're going to put a bathroom in it.
Oh. Okay, they're still renting it, they just didn't build in the building, basically.
Yes, yes. Probably should clarify that language, um, so it's, but yeah, that's, that's that, um, next slide, please. And then just a little history, um, so in nineteen eighty-nine, the bylaw was adopted, so we've had this bylaw for thirty-five years. It was amended in nineteen ninety-three, there used to be a prohibition that, um, principal, single-family homes in conservation clusters could not have accessory apartments, it was removed. And then in two thousand and six, that's when the provisions for the affordable accessory apartments were added. In the twenty thirteen, that, that, um, property transfer reapproval process, that was added. And then in twenty seventeen, the most important thing that happened was that accessory apartments became allowed, I believe this was partly on the floor of town meeting, there was a floor change, um, in new, and, new construction and existing detached structures. So there's been thirty-six applications in thirty-five years, uh, nineteen of them happened before twenty seventeen, and twenty seventeen's at that critical year, because twenty seventeen's when they were, became allowed in detached structures. Um, and then since then, there's been fifteen applications, um, or sorry, seventeen applications, um. So thirty-six overall in thirty-five years. Next slide, please.
Is there information on how those are used, is for, for family, or is that information not available or known? Generally, when people do this.
Yeah, so at that time, they usually tell the board, like, during the process, who it's for, but that, you know, can change over time. The, right now, with the owner occupancy requirement, the owner has to live in either unit, so we at least know that. But I don't have data on like how they're all currently used.
But now you could have a situation where, like to your earlier example, there's a lease between the homeowner and the tenant in the apartment. And that lease, like a standard lease, if they, if they sell their house, the lease survives that sale, right?
Right.
You can write that kind of stuff in a lease, right?
Um, and so just a little bit of, like, the context of our timeline, um, given the state's kind of timeline. So it was just last Tuesday that the governor signed the Affordable Homes Act. There's a provision in it that says that the requirements for ADUs won't be effective for a hundred and eighty days. Um, and so that would push out to the last, the pink column there, um, February twenty twenty-five. And in the meantime, so last night was August twelfth, the planning board hearing opened. Um, the planning board hearing's gonna remain open at least another couple of months, until we absolutely have to close it for the town meeting warrant. Um, and then at some point this fall, like, the, the legislation says that the housing, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities may promulgate guidelines to kind of help municipalities through the process, and to understand the law, they, they, they also may not, um, they're very busy with MBTA communities. So I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know, and I couldn't get any real good intel on, on that. There, I should know more in a couple of weeks, when there's like, gonna be some webinars put on by state agencies to kind of help planners figure this out. But, you know, we're, and the, the planning board hasn't had a chance really to react to the feedback that they got last night, and so I'm gonna investigate all of the concerns that were brought up, and bring them back a lot more information for October, and they may just, or sorry, September. They may decide, uh, that they wanna do things completely differently, or just wait for the guidance to come out, um, to see if there's guidance. So, you know, like currently, the current thinking is this fall town meeting, November twelfth, but that, like, they really haven't had a chance to kind of reconvene after the, after last night yet, to chart a path forward that might make more sense.
Okay, this is planning board?
Yeah.
And i, is the Commonwealth generally favorable to this? It sounds like, right, they look at this as a way of increasing housing stock.
That's why we're doing it.
Right, and you mentioned MBTA, and then there's, I guess, other, uh, like the thirty Bs. Does this dovetail into those plans, if we adopt it?
So that's a great question, so, um, the, the, the way that, so it's complicated, so the way that multifamily is defined, right? Would be more than two units per lot, right? And the accessory apartment is really just two units per lot, so it doesn't really fit neatly into MBTA communities piece of it, unless we were to say more than one accessory apartment per lot, and then we might get closer to that. The, this, this legislation is not like forty B, like forty B, you've probably heard of, right? It's a comprehensive permit process, where a town doesn't have enough affordable housing, according to the state, and a developer can come in and say, I'm putting this, you know, ginormous mid-rise building anywhere I want, and I don't have to comply with local zoning or any local regulations, right? This is not that, the accessory apartments will still have to comply with Title V, local wetlands regulations.
I mean, but it would, I mean, not that we're anywhere close to meeting the criteria, but if the AAs were affordable, they could count towards the.
Subsidized housing authority, yes, absolutely. Right.
If they're affordable.
Um, and so, next slide, please.
How do you rent it to your mother-in-law for a dollar a year? Is that count?
You don't rent it to your mother-in-law, you just put her in there.
Do you have multiple presentations?
Lock the door.
Uh, I have, well, Addie's gonna do, do the next one, and then I have another one.
Okay.
Um, but so just to recap of next steps, the hearing is, is still open, the next session is September ninth, um, and then the process, town council's gonna review the draft bylaw that the planning board has, um, shortly. I, I plan to send it to them tomorrow or Thursday. Um, and then, you know, you know the warrant closes, you know the rest of this stuff, um, I got it from, got it from Ryan, so, um. So that's, that's that.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
That's great. Julie, thank you very much.
Hello, Addie.
Hello, Addie.
Hey, guys, how's it going?
Great. What have you got?
Uh, I've got MBTA communities updates, and I'm gonna apologize in advance, because I have COVID, so if I space out, I apologize. Can I have the, um, can I share my screen?
Yep.
Do I need to be made a presenter?
Ryan is taking care of it right now.
You're good.
Okay. Okay, so, thanks, everyone, um, I'm excited to give you an update on where we are with the subcommittee, um, of the planning board. We have a, a great group that's been getting together frequently for the last several months, and including, uh, members of the, so me, representing the planning board, a, a Board of Health member, um, catered over there in the select board capacity or in the housing trust capacity, but one of those, um, we have a member of the, um, what was that?
Select board. I'm select board, because Chris Johnson's there for us.
Oh, right, Chris Johnson's there, um, for Affordable Housing Trust, we have Christina for the Sustainability Committee, and I'm sure there are more that I'm missing, um. But, uh, oh, here's the list, thank you, thank you, Julie, for putting together my slides for me. We also, um, have Hallen from Concom. So, just a quick reminder on what the law is, um, Carlisle was zoned for ninety-five new units, that's five percent of the town's twenty-twenty housing stock, at, at a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre. And this is a, this is gonna be a critical one, so hope this in your, the back of your mind, um, and forget what you think the word gross means.
Gross density.
Multi.
Pretty gross, you know, fifteen houses, I don't think.
Wait, wait, wait until you see the math.
I wish I could see all your faces, because I, I'm only seeing the screen and myself, um. Anyway, um, sorry, going back, uh, it must be, uh, multifamily, which means that it has to be, allow for one building of three or more units, or sorry, three units, or two buildings, um, each with more than one unit, which basically means the minimum, um, unit count is three units, uh, but you can have two buildings with two units, and that's four units, obviously. Must be ads of right for a site plan review, um, and it must allow for housing for families, so there's no age restriction, no limit on bedroom counter size, and no limit on number of occupants in the zoning, excuse me. The zone can be any size and located anywhere in town, um, you may have heard of other restrictions for other towns. Sometimes it's hard to navigate, uh, what's applicable to us and what's not, but this very specifically is, um, we are allowed to zone for any size, uh, create a zone for, of any size and located anywhere in town. And, um, it's important to note that we, it's not on this list, but it probably is on a future slide, critically, um, we, so Title V must be adhered to, so, um, that's a very critical aspect of our strategy here. And then in terms of affordability, we can require up to ten percent of the units be affordable to households earning eighty percent of very immediate income, but we can't, um, impose a greater level of affordability restriction. So, the strategies under consideration really fall into two categories. One is, um, a true fifteen units per acre type development, where you can see here on the top, a quick sketch-up of what fifteen units on one acre might look like. This is in a three-story building, and it takes up about a six thousand square foot footprint. This would need to be, um, serviced by either utilities on the edge of town or, um, something other than private septic and well, given the lack of space to fit such things on a one-acre site of fifteen minutes. Um, and more importantly, uh, given certain requirements or limitations that Title V proposes, that we'll get to. Um, this strategy might be appropriate for, um, uh, town sites, combining housing in a community center, we've been talking a little bit about that, or small-scale useful opportunities, like the blockhouse or Highland. Uh, we've also been talking about single-family conversion to multifamily, so you could imagine how, you know, a six thousand square foot, six-bedroom, home could be potentially, uh, carved up into three, uh, two-bedroom units. Seen that done, we've probably all seen that done in, uh. Seen that done, we've probably all seen that done in Arlington, Lexington, all over the place, with some of the older, larger buildings, the larger homes in those towns. And then there's our creative strategy, which is a multifamily conservation cluster, which would allow us to do a density that looks more like what you see at the bottom of the page here, which is really just six townhouse units on a three-acre site. So critically, what you're looking at up above is a one acre, and down here is a three acre, so it's unfortunately not scaled properly. But ultimately, what you're perceiving in this approach below is a much, much lower density than you would at the fifteen units an acre above, but this lower scheme does meet the fifteen units an acre density requirement of the, of the law for a very specific reason that I'll get into in a second. So here are the codes, the rules. MBTA Communities Guidelines says that the gross density calculation, again, suspend your knowledge of the word gross, excludes surface water bodies, wetlands, and buffers, protected open space, and land needed to protect private and public water supply. So this is really a critical point here. Because with Title V, any lot that is both private septic and private well is considered nitrogen-sensitive in that it is, it is restricted to protect the public and private water supply. So this is why with Title V, we're only allowed to build four bedrooms per acre with a conventional septic, septic system. So as you probably have experienced, there's the one-ten gallons per bedroom per day for the nitrogen loading on a, on a single-family home site or a, or a residential site that has septic and well. And that's, that allows for four hundred and forty gallons per bedroom per day on that acre, which is equivalent to four bedrooms. So nitrogen-sensitive land is excluded land for the purposes of calculating the gross density under the law, which is kind of where we find our opportunity. So as Julie says here, wake up, here's the math. So it turns out that a survey acre, meaning an acre that a surveyor would calculate is exactly forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. But Title V defines an acre as forty thousand square feet. So there's, there's our excluded land right there, the forty thousand square feet of nitrogen-loading land, which means that the developable land, per the MBTA community's calculation of density, is only three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet for each acre. It's about eight point two percent of an acre. And so the bedrooms that are allowed on that acre, on that acre are four. So you can imagine, you have a four-bedroom, one thousand square foot house, that, that house, if you were to just do a quick density calculation, it's really one unit per eight point two percent of an acre, not per acre. Does that make sense? So I can't see my audience, I'm so used to reading all the information.
Yes, yes.
So, so the, the concept here is that we cluster bedrooms into units on the quote "developable land", and then the excluded land, which is the nitrogen-loading land, is excluded from the gross density calculation. And this enables to, us to create a density that feels more like Carlyle, but still provides multifamily, and it complies with Title V, and so therefore meets the density requirements of the MBTA communities law. And, and we've sort of been characterizing this as technically meets the requirements of the law. It, that makes it sound like it's underhanded. It actually isn't, it is technical, but it also is real. So quickly, sort of, trying to visualize this, because I've found many times when I've tried to explain this, that a drawing helps. So the idea here is that with one survey acre, which is the purple, forty thousand square feet of that survey acre is nitrogen-loading land, and so it's excluded from the definition, excluded from the calculation of density. And the developable land, which is the denominator in the units per acre, is three thousand five hundred and sixty. You know, as you know, of course, a acre can come in any shape. It's not necessarily, you know, two hundred by two seventeen point eight, but that's sort of what my COVID break did today.
So, Addie, I'm trying to follow this, but in this sketch, then, the, the, the little corner there, the thirty-five sixty, is like barely one house, like, it's just.
You don't actually have to limit your developable, you're ac, you don't actually have to limit, limit the development to the area of the developable land.
Okay.
It's simply the math for the calculation because of the fact that, so in other words, right? We have, I, I, we have, you know, six thousand square foot homes on two-acre lots.
Right.
They're not just limited to the quote-unquote "developable land" within that, that site. They can be anywhere within that site, they can be well more than a, a footprint of sixty or seventy-one, twenty-eight.
But it meets, meets or exceeds the requirement because of the way you define it.
Yes.
And then your, your septic and your field would be in the nitrogen-loading land, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the whole, anything can be anywhere, really, technically. But as we develop this, we're going to start thinking about how we want to craft the zoning so that there is kind of conservation area and developed area. But technically, just because it's nitrogen-loading land, it doesn't mean you can't build on it. All it means is that when we calculate the density for purposes of the law, we use the three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet.
As the denominator.
Yeah.
And the denominator.
So what, so where does this all lead to? Like, where do we find all this land?
Well, it could.
Well, hold on, hold on, we're getting there.
Those are more together.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we have a lot of?
So.
Yeah, we do.
We do?
So let, let, let me just kind of finish this, the rationale here. So Julie, this is a new slide, so.
It's not.
If I'm saying too much, I call this, we're, we're kind of threading a needle here, this is the eye of the needle, right? So land is considered nitrogen-sensitive observed by private septic and private well. Those are the two things that need to be there. The maximum number of residents allowed in a private well, so to be private, it has to have a maximum number of twenty-five users. And what Linda Fantasia has told us is that typically, mass T E P, if they see a development with multiple wells, trying to, you know, reduce it to twenty-five residents per well within a single development, they'll say, no, 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 you got to do a public water supply for that, which makes, which is a regulated well, which has all kinds of other protections, et cetera, but it renders that land no longer nitrogen-sensitive, and so it's not, it doesn't end up with the same kind of calculation. So we're trying to keep it to that twenty-five users. And with the design residents per bedroom, it's two per bedroom, as it is with all water and septic-related things, whether or not the actual occupancy is less, so it's designed to the maximum occupancy. So the max number of bedrooms for private septic and private well is twelve with twenty-four residents, because obviously you can't have half a bedroom. And then, so for twenty-four residents, the max, maximum number of nitrogen-sensitive acres that you can utilize for this strategy is three, with four bedrooms per acre, that creates twenty-four, twenty-four, or twelve bedrooms, rather. And of course, the minimum units for the MBTA communities law is three. So the idea here is that the three-acre lots with a survey acreage of one hundred and thirty thousand square feet and a Title V acreage of one hundred and twenty thousand square feet, so that's the excluded land. What's left is the ten thousand six hundred and eighty square feet of developable land. And that the bedrooms for the conventional Title V septic system is going to be twelve bedrooms. So we can, we can distribute twelve bedrooms in six units as, you know, two bedrooms per unit. So the, the technical density, the calculated density per the law in that sense is twenty-four and a half units per acre, but really, we see it, we perceive it as two units an acre. And then, you know, we can do it as twelve bedrooms, with twelve bedrooms as four units, so three bedrooms per unit. That's by the calculation sixteen point three units per acre, but really, we perceive it as one point three units per acre. So this is just the same thing over again, but with a larger space allocated to it. And we sort of talked about this, so the developable land's specific location need not be defined. So what's interesting is that the, the feedback that we've gotten from the state is that they, they think this strategy is really interesting and creative, and others who are in a similar, other towns that are in a similar situation as us with town-wide dependence upon se, private septic and private wells have gotten at this kind of, as more of a blunt instrument, not quite threading the needle like we have. But in general, the concept is the same, where there's land that's carved off as kind of conservation land, and then the, the multifamily density is concentrated into, well, it's, it's just on a smaller portion of the lot. And then because the conservation land gets carved out in the density calculation, now you have a smaller area of land that's, that it, that becomes your denominator for your units per acre calculation. And they like our approach so much that they were willing to give us an unlocked version of their compliance model so that we can model our strategy. Their compliance model critically does not allow for, does not, it does not contemplate nitrogen land as excluded land, even though the regulations and their own guidelines say that it is. So they gave us their unlocked model, not us, but our consultant, so that we can model our approach and accurately reflect the nitrogen-sensitive land. So we, the next step for the Subcommittee is to narrow some of our list of strategies, figure out locations in the town where this could make sense, compile and analyze our survey results, potentially go to another survey that gets more specific about this, and then submit recommendations to the Planning Board. Our goal here is for this to go to town meeting in the spring. So it'll be hard at work this fall to try to zero in on a strategy that we think can, can work. We're going to have an open house October sixteenth, and then another one in mid-late November. So the open house concept is, I need to see you people, I'm sorry, I have to stop sharing. The open house concept is that this is a complicated concept, and it's really helpful to have pretty direct one-on-one conversations with folks to try to walk them through how we're trying to approach this in a way that enables us to create zoning that would result in development that fits the character of Carlyle as opposed to complying more with the letter of the law and just simply finding a six-and-a-half acre site somewhere and saying, okay, you can build ninety-five units on that.
Got it. Yep.
Great.
Addie, this is really helpful and informative, and I'm so glad that so many bright people within Carlyle have been working on this. Good.
Thank you, it's, it's been fun.
That's great.
Once we get ourselves untwisted from being a pencil trying to figure this out.
Yes. And again, the output is, would be a zoning change in certain strategically-selected areas to enable the development that would satisfy the law.
Right, it's a zoning change, and so there's locations and there's a language.
And but, and then, then you need someone that actually wants to develop according to that.
We don't, we don't need that.
Oh, you don't even need that? You just need to zone it, and then you're good? And if someone buys the land and builds a giant houses, it doesn't matter, or it's just zoned?
It's, it's, it would be a zoning option, so the Subcommittee is still working to determine whether it would be an overlay or a change to base zoning, or what kind of, how it would fit into zoning, but it would be an option.
Would it restrict people to that type of structure, or it's just zoned? Okay, interesting.
They could even buy a single house divided up into four units.
Interesting.
If it's in the zone, if it's in, you know, and you got your fifteen acre, you know, you've got, got one built.
Where's the boghouse fit into this?
Right, great question.
Perfect segue, right?
Yep.
It is.
Yep.
I mean, it sounds like it falls into that needle, potentially.
Could.
Potentially.
Yep.
Oh, this is our first offsite.
It's not really the first, no, it was really the first one.
Of the year.
Of the year.
Okay, all right.
This may have been our first since I've been here.
About the bog?
No, about offsite.
Oh, offsite.
All right, so I'll just jump right in, you guys have seen this before, I just updated it with today's date. Next slide, please, Ryan. Um, so feasibility study, step one is just documentation of existing conditions. So here I just mentioned, we do have some existing documentation. And then at the other end, we have twenty thousand dollars of funding that was approved at town meeting. So I split that twenty thousand dollars between two consultants. We have fifteen thousand dollars for the engineering site survey. I'm like hoping that contract gets finalized like this week or next week. I'm like, work, I've been working back and forth with them on the scope. And then the architectural piece is five thousand dollars, that one's like signed and they're ready to go. What couldn't be included in this amount of funding was a septic analysis or like a survey of the location where we think any septic might go. That's, that was what, all the back and forth I had, which was, we were trying to figure out if they could like squeeze that in with the fifteen K, and they were just like, no. So I did ask them to provide a scope so that we have an idea of what that would cost if we get to that step after this, this first step. Next slide, please. So the engineering scope, it includes a survey, oh no, it doesn't show my, I, well, here. Yeah, just circle the boghouse, Ryan, around where the, the wetlands and the bog are, like, okay. So the, the survey limits are right here, I had outlined it in red, but I don't know, it didn't come through. And so they're going to just, that's approximately two acres, they think, and so they're going to stick to that side of Perd Street. It was, the, the thing I'm asking for a scope for is, is some area down here where there's the field, where I'm told would be a good location for a new septic. But so the scope now includes that part, I, with the boghouse, it'd be a property line survey and a topo and utility survey, including a wetlands delineation, so that we have.
The bog is on the top?
Yeah.
So the other side, across the street.
Across the street, yeah.
I got you, so you have to drill through the street?
Yeah, there would be some work needed in the street. But yeah, so, just basically understanding what's on the site now, what are the current property constraints? Like having a wetlands delineation is going to be helpful. Having a survey of this side will be helpful. I'll explain in a minute, actually, so next slide, please. The architecture scope includes just existing conditions of the four-and-a-half acre structure. We don't have that, so they'd be to scale, dimensions, the entire building, so we understand how much square footage we really have. They'll, they'll prepare a summary of findings, and then they're going to prepare one planning option with the space arranged in the best way they can to meet the programmatic goals. And then, fast forward, with that planning option, they'll prepare a preliminary conceptual cost estimate, and then help us figure out an implementation plan. Notably here, it is important for them to understand what the programmatic goals are. We can come back to that, and then, next slide, please, Ryan. So this information is necessary because we can't really go anywhere until we understand what it is we have. So we need to document existing conditions on town roof property. The survey-level data and information is required when we carve the land out of Article ninety-seven. And then this documentation, it can be leveraged towards any future use, like it doesn't have to be just for housing, but if, if something else is better for this property, this documentation will be useful to that, too, and it can form decision-making and next steps. What we can expect from this first step, we'll, we'll uncover any showstoppers or major constraints, right, related to the site or the building conditions. Gienap at the site visit mentioned, you know, that this will be helpful in helping the town kind of rule out some things just based on the different commercial and residential building codes and, and understanding the square footage and the egresses and different requirements that the building will have can help us rule out uses, and then just determining next, next steps. Like, if we learn that we think, you know, there's a use that's possible, then we can kind of work, figure out what, what scopes of work do we need for the next step of the process. Next slide, please. And then just, like, process considerations, don't pay any attention to the little icons, they don't really mean much. And then just, like, process considerations, don't pay any attention to the little icons, they don't really mean much. But, so, current occupancy, there's tenants and farming equipment. The land custody issue needing to transfer it from conscom to the select board. Then the Article 97 carve-out, so there's a waiver process. If that doesn't apply, even though we might, we might comply with kind of the intent of it, if we don't comply with the letter of it, we may need to find land or funds to exchange, right? We carve out this land from Article 97, we have to give something back or find some funds. I believe the next application cycle is January, but I need to confirm that. This, these aren't in any, necessarily in any particular order, and some of them will have, could happen simultaneously, it should happen simultaneously. And then there's historic opportunities with the property, and this was discussed at the site visit, like historic preservation restrictions, like can unlock funding, but they also come with strings attached, so just investigating that. I believe it's on the state register, it's not on the federal register, but again, like, people who've done projects, housing projects in historic properties have said one of the most important things they did was get the property on the national register because it unlocked federal historic tax credits. So something worth investigating, that is maybe like a two-year process though, so it's not something that would happen overnight. And then zoning options, right? So we don't currently have zoning in place to allow multifamily in the boghouse. There are some provisions in the zoning bylaw that may be able to be updated, to be amended fairly easily to allow something like this, or maybe this becomes part, gets lumped in with the MBTA communities if we pursue that multifamily conservation cost per strategy. And then just an important note here, so because this is being talked about publicly so frequently, I'm getting contacted by different entities, such as the Attorney General's Office, a new housing affordability unit reached out and said, we want to figure out how we can assist Carlisle with this process, with this project. So town council and I met with them, and one of the things that, you know, I suggested was advocacy on behalf of the town to the EOEEA, which is the Executive Office of Environmental and Energy Affairs. And they oversee the Article 97 land, right? So they, they did express interest in advocating for, like, like, again, you know, other state agencies that have regulations that are making housing more difficult.
So 97, we would take it out of agricultural land and cons, are they one of the same conscom and agriculture?
Yeah, they're, they're conservation purposes.
Right, and it would become just town property?
Right.
Plan all town property and presumably zoned in some way.
Or other municipal use, or something like that, yeah. Uh, next slide. Yeah, and then just additional process considerations, community outreach obviously is important. And then just the housing affordability piece, so at some point we'll need to see how that pencils out. I did get a scope of work, an estimate for, from a company that specializes in affordable housing, and they said like for 10K they could kind of help us figure that out. I don't know if that's something we'll get there, but
Figure out the affordability.
Yeah, kind of like
But this is all after, the preliminary work, as you're saying, where you discard certain options and you focus in on those that are reasonably good.
So if, if we get there to that being the goal, right, like, and, and it looks like it can work in the structure, we can
But we were having this conversation informally at the site visit, but in the first phase of this, the phase you're in, we're not, are we gonna get a ROM idea of the cost of
They're gonna put together a cost estimate for us based on their planning option, right? So, you know, we'll have to figure out what all they're considering as part of that. So maybe that would obv, maybe that would obviate this piece, but, yeah.
If they come back $2 million to fix it, it's not really affordable, right?
Well,
Depends who might pay for it.
Funding opportunities is the next.
Funding opportunities.
Yeah, so, you know, if, if we determine that this could be community housing, it could unlock CPA funds, the Housing Trust has funds, Mass Housing has grants. I had someone out from Mass Housing in January, I think, taking a look at the property. There's interest there, but weren't we, at, in this early stage, we weren't really ready to apply for a grant for this? Like, they, they wanna know that, Mass Housing wants to know that they're allocating their grants to projects that will actually result in housing. So, so maybe at a future phase, again, historic tax credits, and then my note here on the side is Habitat for Humanity. They've expressed interest, like a lot of interests in, in this project, and they do do their own fundraising. And so that's something we should probably continue to explore if housing is the goal. Local approval process, obviously, this is gonna go to every single land you spot, and then some. And then project procurement, so those are, I'm sure there's steps in here I haven't thought of or that will reveal themselves when more is known, but this is the universe of things for, for now.
This is gonna hit all the, all the buttons along the way.
I think potentially the only thing that's not on the site is ledge. Some, some properties also have ledge.
Oh, you haven't gone down yet.
But, you know.
Oh, you mean
As a challenge, as a constraint, yeah.
Okay.
Once Tony gets it, you'll find.
So besides acknowledging the tremendous amount of work that Julie and others have put in, into these three projects, the point of bringing it to was Carlisle historically has a process problem with big problems like this. So it tends to go from board to board to board. So these three big discussions are happening townwide. The faster the select board gets involved and expresses their concerns, problems, issues, the more likely it is we hit these tremendous markers. So I just did the, the meeting calendar for the town meeting, which is likely to be at the end of April, which means you have essentially eight to 12 meetings to include the budget and all the other things in order to weigh in on these topics, so it's just not possible in your meeting schedule without some concerted goal-making efforts on them.
But is this, we didn't talk timing, so Julie, if you go back to like phase one, what, the, the study that you're now commissioning or you have commissioned, that's, when is that information
Yeah.
known?
So it should be in the next month or two. What would be helpful is if this is all for naught, because the select board doesn't want to do any of this, or doesn't want us to be engaging in this process, then that would be good to know now.
No, but, I mean
Where there was a goal in mind that, that you definitely would approve, depending on costs and all the other variables, then, then we can really hone in on
But isn't that, again, we were having this same discussion, same logjam between you and me. It seems like you got a baseline, and you gotta say, these things are just not feasible for, I mean, you can spend enough money, you can do anything, but these are really not feasible alternatives. Here are a few feasible alternatives, and the ballpark of those is X, or some range. Don't we have to have that first, before we can tell you, well, this 'cause I don't know, I can't say, I want it to be affordable housing if it's a $2 million for three apartments. That's not a good use of $2 million, like, there's lots more
But there's different funding options, but I think
I get it, but you got a baseline first.
Another goal, I, I think what Ryan is saying is that they, that we are kind of the policymaking board, and we have to determine what, you know, use ultimately, or goal, we wanna see with this, the boghouse being a good example. So if we want housing there, or if we want municipal, I don't know,
Offices.
Offices, something like that. But to your point, you really can't figure that out until you get, until you get some, some numbers and cost estimates.
This is gonna happen pretty soon.
Not even the cost, it sounds like this study will at least tell us physically what's possible. Maybe it doesn't get us all the cost estimates, but as you said, it will rule out probably some options. So let's look at that. I don't want it to sit there and fall apart for the next eight years. Let's take, let's take that and do nothing off the table.
That's why it's a goal this year.
Um, yeah, and I think, you know, I think there's probably a handful of uses that we'll wanna Housing, community use, we can put a priority on that, depending on cost estimates that come in, but I don't think there's a huge range of potential uses for it. And so I think let's get this study in, and then let's just move to kind of trying to help you push this through down the line or wherever it needs to go.
But also the two density discussions that happened, MBTA zoning and the
A lot of moving parts here.
The AA bylaw, those are gonna be, the town will be looking to you to weigh in on those very important discussions, so.
But on those, I mean, again, tremendous work by Julie and Addy and everybody, but just reflecting back on the, setting this one aside, the AA, now that the governor's signed a bill and you're bringing us into compliance, that, that seems, I won't say no-brainer, but that seems pretty logical. Like, we would want a bylaw that is roughly in line with the state and nods to our particularities. And then whether we seek to promote that use is a whole nother question, but at least, at least we get the bylaw, right? That, that seems like a smart thing to do. And MBTA, unless we wanna go the way of Milton, I mean, we gotta figure out a way to comply, and it sounds like there's a creative solution, so why wouldn't we do that, right? I mean, I, I don't see on those first two, anything to say we wouldn't do those things. Those are things that are in line with our objectives, they make perfect sense, they've been well researched. This one is just more problematical, because eventually it's gonna come to what's the best use of the money. And we know, 'cause we live at every meeting, lots of people will raise their hand for, you know, funding.
Yeah, but leaning it there is not an option.
No, no, we got
So some money will have to be spent.
Money will have to be spent.
So I, I remember one of the goals, I first sat with this board, talk about goals, and you said affordable housing is a goal. So there's, here's three paths to affordable housing.
Yeah. We don't know that Granbury Bog is a path to affordable housing yet.
It's a path. It might be a path.
Might be.
But that's, isn't this what the study's gonna help confirm? I mean, isn't that kind of what we're waiting for?
I think we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't see us delaying, I think the next step is to get the information back and then
We, we agreed to fund this initial step, so let's just get it going, and, and we did that because we wanna have it as a productive asset, or it's not.
I mean, as we sit here today, having, turning it into housing in a, in an economic fashion, using fund, alternate funds, is, would probably be the best-case scenario, as, as we sit here today, to me.
Okay.
And the other, I'm just gonna, just one more time, the other two issues, without, without you getting involved, in my opinion, as your advisor, not as anyone who cares about the outcome, right, will spiral. Because right now, it's in the committee, and the people who are very knowledgeable about it know a lot about it, but as the community becomes exposed, you're, it's gonna get
Those are town meeting votes, correct?
So your opinion and weighing in and leadership on those issues is, is gonna be essential. As, as you look at all the communities that have done MBTA communities or accessory apartment bylaws, the, the, the towns that are rowing in the same direction and had the fights early and the committee meetings are successful, and the ones who don't, like, the town meetings just explode, so. That's why we're exposing it to you and
And those are fall, fall town meeting, the accessory apartment would be fall town meeting, and then the
The planning board still needs to, to talk about whether they still wanna move forward or wait for the guidance, potential guidance to come out, you know, 'cause there is a risk with moving forward without knowing what the guidance is gonna be.
The guidance sign double A's?
Yep, like, if this, if, if the Housing and Littleville Communities Division will put out guidance, so
But I would say we would wanna put something before the town no later than annual town meeting.
Right, yeah, so that, that would be the target, I think, you know, if they don't do it this fall.
For MBTA, we have to.
Yeah, so
But so, and then, we, I, I think the planning board was trying to avoid putting both of them at the same time, but
Put one in the fall, then put one in the fall.
Well, that was the one, that's why they were gonna try to do AA in the fall, but they're
But the window's gonna close fast, I'm getting ready for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think we heard anything tonight, though, that is objectionable.
No.
I think what he's saying is you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to
If you want it in the fall, it's gonna be a horse race.
We can't just sit back and let the process play out.
Exactly.
We need to stay aware of what's going on at all.
Right, and, and I think one of your slides said outreach, 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 or something like that, but outreach is important, and what Ryan's saying is outreach is gonna be important, and I, I am worried that fall town meeting is too soon, 'cause everybody's on vacation right now. They're only gonna wake up in about three or four weeks, and we're running right into setting the agenda. I realize that you're having these hearings, so that's good, but that's a question, I think, maybe also a question for you and the planning board. Do we have enough knowledge, is enough knowledge about this complicated issue been disseminated to enable people to get their heads wrapped around it by November 12th?
You're talking about the accessory apartment?
Yes, I mean, that's the only one that's really
I mean, I would say that there isn't enough knowledge currently, just because we don't, the legislation was just signed, we don't know if there's guidance coming, but that might change in a few weeks, a month.
What's the tenor of the feedback on this from the community, or people?
Well, last night they had a hearing, and they heard both sides of that. I mean, some people wanted to, said, gosh, we need to push it off because we wanna wait till you hear what the state has, because it makes no sense to try and preempt the state. And others said, no, it makes a lot of sense to preempt, so let's get this in place so that we'll, you know, if we need to tweak it down the road.
But were any of those parties saying, I don't want it, it's too many people, I don't want the density? We're getting that feedback. And the NIMBY, the NIMBY faction says, just don't make it dense, right?
We got some critical feedback, but it wasn't in the NIMBY category.
Right, it was just more about the technical aspects.
So it's really just early, we're gonna do it, but should we do it early, or should we do it?
And also like, how should, how should we do it, you know, some of the mechanics of it, right? And, and then, you know, if, like, the state law doesn't require that the towns have a bylaw, right? We can have a site plan review process, which is by right for accessory dwelling units, you know, up to 900 square feet. We don't have to. If we don't have one, what would happen in the interim, like, once the law becomes effective, if someone comes in with an application that is 900 square feet and meets that, they could just get a building permit? So that's also
So that's a good argument, that's a very good argument, to say, let's put it on a fall town meeting, let's be ahead of it, so that by February, whatever
Well, I'm not making that argument, I'm just saying that is how it
No, but that is a good argument for the early
The planning board would have to decide if, if they, if, if they think that's a good argument for doing it early, right?
So is the planning board, I mean, we're well aware of town meeting calendars, are they also?
I mean, yes, I, I, I think I've been
They know their window for meeting, that's
Beating them with it, the information
They talked about it last night over here.
So they know, like, they have two months, basically, to sort it out, okay.
Yeah, they have been talking about the accessory apartment bylaw since February. And they did gel around some ideas, which is why they felt like starting the public hearing process was appropriate. You know, the landscape has shifted a little bit.
Okay. It's a really exciting annual town meeting.
Shaping up to be
Not like, was it last year, we were out in like two hours?
Yeah, well, I know we have one more kind of agenda item, but we've kind of, we may not have enough time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you for your time.
Exciting.
Very exciting, so many exciting things happening.
Hey Julie, that's old pal, are we set for Thursday morning?
Yes.
That thing is, it's at eight or nine?
It's all coordinated, is it nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock, okay, wait, thanks.
All right, so another small
Thank you, Julie.
Sure.
Thanks, Addy.
Thank you, Randy, I hope you feel better.
Another small topic is what you asked to be brought as the town administrator bylaw. So I'm gonna turn this over to Kate, but I did wanna help frame two, two points. One is, there's really, there's obviously always more than three options, but there's really three options. There's a local bylaw, there's a special act bylaw, and there's a charter. Everything I've heard from you, the charter's off the table, so really you have the two other options. So that, here is the difference. A, a local bylaw would set anything within your purview under that policy of the bylaw, but would not touch anything that, that relates to mass general law. So any of the siloing or other things you wanted to address through the town administrator would not, would not be impacted by a local bylaw. If you change to a special act, then you are mending Massachusetts general law and stating what Carlisle wants for the law, and it would have to go to the legislature. So those are your two paths.
Can you do the faster one first, and then pursue the other one after? 'Cause you can do this just through town meeting, right?
Yes, I just, I just wanna make sure you know that if you're trying to do something, that, the, certain things, the general bylaw would not accomplish a lot of those things, it kind of just puts a stake in the ground. It doesn't really have any authority.
And this, the, the one that would require legislature, is, is that a majority vote at town meeting? The same
Yes.
Same threshold, it's just the added step of then going to the legislature for ratification?
So instead of adopting a general law, you're making one. That's the difference.
So is that why, 'cause in reading this, I liked it, but in, in the beginning of it, it, it's sort of silent on those staff people who are basically appointed by independent boards that aren't boards that aren't the select board, right?
So that's what I wanted to, so the framing problem one is how you create this bylaw. The, the second one is what I would call the, your main concerns in terms of, and I'm trying to use town administrator on purpose, not me, right? So the town administrator functions in the town. So one of them is appointments and evaluations and hiring and firing is what people would generally call it. So who, who does the town administrator hire and fire, and who do other people hire and fire? The second thing is overall HR authority, which is connected to appointment authority as well, but in areas where it's silent, who is in charge of human resources and personnel? The third is the control of town hall and/or more. So, does the town administrator have the ability to make changes in town hall or hours and structures and things? The fourth one is what authorities, as the select board and other boards delegating to the town administrator. So here is where you solve your problem of who approves cemetery deeds, right, those types of things. And then the last one I think is important that wasn't in the government study is investigation power. So, do you want to give the town administrator the ability to investigate things like ethics and other things? So right now, my authority to do that, the town administrator's authority to do that comes through you.
When you say investigate, you mean specific cases where something is alleged or in general?
In general, or it could be in cases, it could, however much investigation power you want to give to the chief executive.
Right, but...
So that solves a problem, why it matters, why I just want to bring it up, why it matters, is a lot of the times you say, well, how are we supposed to know what goes on in the town unless you tell us, right? So that, that helps solve that problem in some cases, and it also does bring on other problems, too, if you're not.
Right, but most of those, except for maybe the first one, the, the power's already sitting here at the select board level, right? It's just, to me, all those other ones are just facets of what we could delegate to you. We're, we're completely in our own authority to, for example, hire the police chief or, you know, things we do.
Hire anyone.
Well, not anyone, I don't know about anyone. I don't know about health agent, for example, but, but, and not superintendent of the schools, right? I mean, there's certain, let's use that. We can't hire the superintendent of the schools. An independently elected body takes care of that.
Correct.
So we can't assign any rights just to Ryan. But almost everything else, cemetery deeds, what wattage this light bulb is, how many times we clean the bathrooms, dog catchers, whatever, we can assign, because it's ours to assign. So you mentioned it, five things, but to me, it's two things. It's all the stuff we have, we can create the authority on you, and it's the stuff we don't have. That's why I was asking you, you do carve out schools in this draft, you don't, and you carve out police and fire chiefs, you don't carve out, like, health agent or town planner, I guess she is under you, or conservation agent, whatever. And I don't know, some of those are appointed by independent boards.
That's why we need to do it as the, as, through the legislature, because...
That piece.
That piece, because...
So the piece we can do now, we just do as stuff we have and we delegate out, right?
Yeah, well, but we've done that, we, in a, we, that is in the bylaws, so.
Well, y- 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 you carve out, with the exception of school department, and, and for some reason, police and fire chief.
No, just the...
Shell point and remove all with it.
Just the fire department, because he's a strong chief, and the library.
Well, I'm...
The last piece that I would have you consider is, you can, so it's authority or, or some people would call it power. So you can, you can give it all, you can give some, or you can give and then, um, check and balance the way American government always works.
Right.
So an example is, the town administrator can appoint everybody, no questions asked, but the select board has to ratify it with X vote, or the select board has to be notified in this many days, or the appointing board has to ratify it as well. So you can give the power and curb it. So the, the examples in here and that were given in your government task force, um, seem to be a way to, to compromise through some of the difficulties that exist in the town. So you could say the town administrator hires everyone except for these five people.
Right, which you kind of did say here.
Yeah, so it's not meant to be prescriptive as much as to have you talk about it, like, you always talk about your big four.
Yeah.
In terms of hiring.
Right.
You might say that explicitly, um, our authority is, is delegated except for these four people.
But my, I'm still not maybe articulating my question. Let's look at 3.3.2B, well, really A and B. So A says we accept, we, we exclude the, the school department, and B says we also exclude the hiring and firing of police and fire chiefs. And then it goes on, and it lists library trustees and fire department, but not police department, and it never mentions Board of Health and the health agent.
That's right.
Why?
Because it...
Is the health agent our appointment or the Board of Health's appointment?
So wait, the way this is written, it would take away all appointing authority from any, anyone under MGL, which is health agents, cons comm agent, the town planner.
And we can do that without an MGL revision?
You cannot.
Cannot. So this is written the MGL way, like going the MGL route.
This is not a, we pass a bylaw, this is the legislature...
This is the harder, this is the longer route.
This is the longer, I wrote it as a...
So you're advocating, go right to the longer route.
I'm advocating going to the stage.
Well, that's really the crux of this con- conversation. Do we want to put in a shorter? We right now are silent on lots of things. Why wouldn't we put in a short term one that we can just vote in the fall and be done with it and then work on the longer one?
Because I think you can put this one in the fall and...
But it, it's going to take how long?
Two years.
Even if it approves, it doesn't, it's not ratified for how long? And what do you do in the interim?
Yeah.
Can you work under that while you wait, or are you just kind of in a holding pattern until, for two years, versus...
I am in that right now.
But we could pass a bylaw.
We can fix a lot of it.
But we could pass a bylaw, I think what you're saying is we could pass a bylaw that just takes effect, that does 70% of it, and then do, uh, so you have that in place while, while you're waiting for legis...
Right, I'm a...
Is the feeling that interim step is not worth doing, or?
That's, that's really up to you.
Right, we shouldn't be looking at Ryan, we should be looking at Kate.
Well, I, I thought we could, we could...
Could you pass both?
Pass this as a bylaw.
But, okay, so if in this bylaw...
And if you pass this bylaw, it, um, it would give him the authority, but no, but, well, gives him the responsibility, but not really the authority.
So let me ask you this, let's say there's a part A and part B.
Yeah.
And part A is stuff that we have complete authority over, and part B is stuff we have to go to MGL.
Right.
If we pass a bylaw that's just A, we're done, we got A, we did it. If we pass an A and B, and now we have to go to MGL for the B part, does it mean we, to Scott's point, are we in a holding pattern on the A part, too, which we could have cleaned up just easily?
No, we can't clean it up easily, because I don't think, I don't think...
If we have a bylaw that's just limits our delegation of our authority to him, we can do that. We pass it, we're done.
We don't need a bylaw for that.
You don't need a bylaw, because we do it anyway.
We do it anyway, but...
We need this for the...
It's not codified.
Yeah.
But, no, but is that a risk? Because I was hearing for the last few years that, from the task force, which wasn't any of this, was, you, you aren't clear, you're not clear enough about what in fact you've delegated to the TA.
Right.
Of your stuff, not of other people's stuff.
I agree.
Of your stuff.
Right, and that's where I started.
Right, but you veered from that, so my question remains the same. If part A is that stuff and part B is stuff we don't have the authority for, and we package them, are we putting the part A in the holding pen for two years while it dribbles through?
I don't think so.
You don't think so? Have we talked to council about that?
Well, we haven't.
Okay, I mean, that's to me the critical issue.
Part of this is getting the questions together that we...
Yeah, I would like to see us clean up what we can clean up.
Right, so there's...
And then tackle the stuff we used to...
It sounds like there's definitely appetite to do the longer term thing.
Yeah.
But is there some, so assuming we can do that and get that passed, then it's going to take how long before it actually gets implemented? Two years?
It's a year or two.
Year or two.
I don't even have fast legislative...
So is there a tactic to fill that year or two that's worthwhile, or is it just keep doing businesses, businesses done until it's...
So the benefit, to answer David's question, the difference would be, you can change your delegation authority at any meeting right now. If you wanted to create a bylaw, then it would require another town meeting, right? So it creates more, this is what the government task force says, it creates more stability and carves out rules for you and for others. Um, that would be the benefit of a half step.
Is there a, could we do a, forgive me, I'm still getting my head around this conversation, but could we do a policy that the select board, we vote on our own, that just codifies what we view as the town administrator's role, that we as a board just gets that in paper, so it's, we have the written thing, we approve it, and then we, and that we can do with our powers?
Right.
That, that are under our purview. We do that, and then we do the longer term approach. So at least, it's not a bylaw, but it's a, it's a clear approved policy that we add, like our other policies, that at least gives Ryan, or if, you know, if this drags out, gives whomever the clarity about what the role is. It doesn't have as much teeth as a bylaw, but it gets, at least it gets it down on, on paper.
And it's, yes, and it, and it doesn't have to go back to, to town meeting every time you want to change some of the authority, and it's all within our, as you have mentioned, all within our purview anyway. So I figured, what's the point of doing the bylaw if we could do this without it and we can just skip a step?
Maybe we do a policy.
All right, that's fine, I mean...
I'm happy to do a policy.
I'd like to, I would like to clean up, a policy's fine with me. I'd like to clean up, you know, can Ryan set town hall hours, for example?
I like his list, like, we can go through his list and just talk about what we as a board want to do on specific things.
Right, anything that's within the framework, so HR...
What's, what's your input been on this draft?
Um, I've found the mechanical paragraphs that would respond to things that you've brought up, and so this was supposed to be an all-inclusive list.
Okay.
That you could, um, and then worked with Kate to go over historically what has been discussed as things that have been sticking points.
Is there anything in this list that you're like, no, I'm not for that at all?
I mean, I'm, it's hard not to see me in the, in the thing, right? And what the town really needs to do is see the, the town administration.
Right, right.
People have been arguing about chief executives since the revolution. So the, the key problems that you talk about, though?
Right.
Are, like, you constantly change, even in my two years here, and it's almost two years now, like, who do we hire and fire, and how do we solve these connection issues, right? Those are the, the main things that, like, if you don't do it, you're not doing anything.
Right, so that's really, again, the crux of the problem is, we know already who you cannot hire and fire, but in between hiring and firing is administering, and we're trying to scoop everybody up into common policies and ways of doing things. And in fact, our policy, if we write a policy, cannot do that, because certain people will raise their hand and say, I'm exempt.
Right.
Go pound sand, Ryan, I'm going to do what I want.
But they'll be exempt from the bylaw, too, presumably.
Well, no, I think the bylaw, if you could muscle it through, would change...
Well, you mean legis, the legisla, we're talking...
Legislature.
Right.
Yes, the legislature.
So we can't fast for, we, we need to do that, right?
So I'm saying...
I think we have no choice.
I agree we have no choice. I'm in the interim step, I'm, I think we're all lined up in the long-term strategy. The interim strategy would have to, can't be written mindlessly, so it's unenforceable. It would have to be narrower, and would have to just call out the exclusions, so that everybody else at least has to know the line.
Well, and then if you, if you have that, and then say town, you bring something before town and it passes and it's not in effect, at least...
At least you have.
You have it and say, this is going to be in effect.
So I'm okay, I'm okay.
Exactly, so exactly where I was thinking.
Look at the end of the tunnel and see the train lines coming.
So I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's why I wrote the bylaws like that.
So, so I guess we should just go through, not tonight, but we should, we should weigh in on the bylaw and, and then put it on the fall town meeting.
Are there, are there, for my benefit, are there any guidelines, standards in other towns that we can, is there anything in here that typically isn't in a town administrator description? Are there things that are usually in a town administrator description that aren't in this, like?
I looked at a whole bunch of them.
Okay.
And some of the, and I did put some language, and then Ryan looked at others, and he said, I think this one is better than what you put in there. So we kind of, you know...
So these are all written from a basis of...
Yeah, and, and some of these I took out of the MGL, by the way. Some, some of the towns that I chose to plagiarize, um, were already, had already...
Is, is there a, do you have...
I don't have special...
Just for my benefit, just so I can get caught up on it, can, are those, are some of those examples, can you point me to some of those, just so I can read other ones, just to like get my head around this thing?
I had them on my original version, and then I decided, no, I'm going to just give you the clean, you know, how I think, you know. But I will certainly send you the, the references that I used.
So there is 351 versions of this.
Yeah.
Did, did, um, the governance task force, they also did some comparables, right?
I started there. I, that's where I started.
Yep.
And then I decided to stiffen up some of the, some of the things that I didn't feel were strong enough.
Right.
And count, town, at some point, town council would review this?
Absolutely, yeah, then the way it's numbered, the way, everything...
We just need to come up, though, with, on the, the policy side, and I, I actually go back to what Ryan laid out, but things like appointments, you know, and delve into, okay, so what are we comfortable with on appointments? And same with, you know, HR authority. Do we want to give them total authority, and is there anything you want to, I mean, so we need to have another discussion, another review of this.
Right. The timeline, is this a target for the fall town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so it has to happen next season.
Pretty soon.
Two meetings, basically.
We are jam-packed, let me just tell you, it's, it's getting...
We might have to have some extra meetings, I have a feeling. Well, and, because budgeting is coming up, too, and I think we need to be talking about budget as well, to start, you know, before Ryan gets...
Well, there's a few key items that we're probably just going to have more time to hash out, right? Like this, you could see this being an hour on an agenda, just to like...
So we may end up having one extra meeting, or, you know, something like that.
When do we need to finalize the proposed language for fall town meeting?
September 24th?
Just working back...
September 24th, the warrant will close, so October 12th.
October 12th, and that's vetted?
Yeah, okay, so we have a little bit of time, not a lot.
Basically a month.
Julie wants to get the AA bylaw. We're talking about the timeline.
We have competing priorities here.
To get the AA bylaw in and get this in.
I don't know, I think it's a valid question for this board, but if we have competing priorities, what is, what are our top priorities in getting done? And I think that a lot of these other...
Well, the heavy lifting on the AA will be done by other people, we just have to...
Right, those, those involve so many more boards, whereas this one, it seems like just us.
We should definitely do this one, and we should do the AA. I think, to me, the AA, there's a compelling argument.
To ask a delicate question, I can imagine this could be a contentious, or, depending on how it's written and what it's prescribing.
Yes.
This could be contentious and...
I think so.
And, and I would also raise the question of strategically, fall town meeting is a less attended...
Right, so people can mobilize a vocal minority against...
Or four, you know.
Yeah, or four, like...
It's going to be the beginners that show up.
I, I think, yeah. So were you headed to, like, maybe it gets pushed?
No, I just want to think through all the...
Well, there's a, you know, the penalty of shooting at the king and missing, right, is that, that, it's not that you can't bring it up again, but you usually have to wait a few cycles before you bring it up again, right? It's not really shooting at the king and missing, because then you go away.
Do you think we target?
But really, we've been there before in other things. And once you get shot down, you really have to wait a couple of years before you bring it back. That's the risk, right?
I think the target needs to be a fall town meeting, but we need to be strategic about how we do that.
Yeah.
And if, for whatever reason, yeah, right, you know.
So we should all think about, I mean...
All right. We're late, and I've run this meeting over time here.
You haven't run it over.
But I think these are all important things.
We've been running around.
But we should, we should all think about it.
So what's the next step? So the next, so our action items are to really go through this. I'd love to see some of the comps.
Yeah, yeah.
And really, our next discussion needs to be an in-depth discussion on the key points.
Yeah, and I like it as a points rather than just the verbiage at this point.
The lawyers will take care of that.
Right. Saying, what are we, what authority do we want to give up?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think...
Delegate.
Yeah. Well, the next meeting's the 27th.
None of it is really given up. It's all...
I think we guys should take it up. Let me see what his agenda, what your agenda says for the 27th here.
What do you...
Well, I'm saying, we should, we should not dilly-dally here.
Yeah.
We're going to quickly run out of time.
Yeah. We're going to quickly run out of time. So...
I don't think I put one in this packet.
You did.
You did.
You did.
We're looking...
And it's full, as I recall.
It is.
Well, it's full, but it's got stuff we just covered, like Boghouse. Do we need Boghouse again?
Which page is it?
I have it on 89, but...
It's page 89.
Okay. Thank you.
OPM, ARPA, man. Minister, I don't know, I just, I feel like, well, you guys are the keepers of the agenda, but it's right there. Now, wait a minute, you have half an hour for it. You actually put it in already.
But that's not going to be long enough.
No.
Well, so you...
Add a half hour.
Add a half an hour, right.
And maybe move, I don't know, maybe move it in sequence somewhere.
Right.
Do you have to have a public hearing with the TA bylaw? As a general bylaw?
No, general, no.
No.
You should.
I mean, how long is...
And we will.
How long is ARPA discussion second meeting time, right?
Because as we have started that already with our, you know, that precedent...
The update won't, and then it's just, how much do we want to allocate?
Before town meetings.
So I'm going to bring recommendations.
Yeah, I think, I think item five of the ARPA is going to be fast.
That can be faster.
So you can make room in there.
We're going to come up, we'll have a pretty specific available allocation and, or a meeting with Ryan next week, and potentially some specific recommendations about how that can be allocated. So it depends on how much discussion we want to have and how much, how many votes we want to take on actually allocating that. But that can be done fairly quickly, or it can be pushed to another meeting. It's not quite as time-sensitive as this.
I would suggest you reach out to the boards who have appointing authority, and there are many, to let them know about this discussion. Because if you do a draft and then bring them in, it's going to add another, like, I would solicit input.
You know the input you're going to get.
Well, it's, I think it'll be varied, right? So almost every board has delegated HR authorities.
So here's what would be useful.
They are delegating it to me, as me, with the current staff member. I think what they would have difficulty with is, do I want to delegate that authority forever? Right? So arrangements change, and...
So it would be useful to have a chart. Because I don't think it's that many people, right? All the people who are already under us, and we've given delegated authority to you as a block, right? That's all those people. And then there's a few people where it sounds like you've been delegated the care and feeding of those employees, but not the hiring and firing of them. And then there's a group, I guess, that's the independently appointed people who are done by those. I mean, if we had a little graph of, like, who were dealing with...
Assessors, for instance.
Well, I don't know them. I mean, it would be good to know all those, because you're saying, reach out to the boards. I don't know what...
Yeah, it gets weird. Like, the assessor's appointed by you, but his assistant...
Okay, but all those little nuances would be useful to, to have, right?
I'm assuming elected positions, that's just its own...
Well, it's not elected.
But we, there are elected positions.
Board of Health, and...
Yeah, these would not...
The appointments of elected. So in the school side, he's just as a block, right?
Their whole school is off table, anyway.
So that's easy. Police chief, fire chief.
Well, the police...
Theoretically, we could delegate that, right? We could, even if we have...
We could, but, well, and, but they're employees. We do not, we would not delegate them. And there's a difference in the strengths, because the fire chief is a strong chief.
I'm just saying. Put it in a chart, so we can figure it out. Just by you guys talking about it, they brought up like six different people. I don't have any idea.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do.
It's kind of the, what was, what's the piece that requires that legislation?
Yes, exactly. And what, no, and what requires outreach?
Right, right.
Well, what requires outreach before you get the ones?
Okay. Okay, so moving around along the TA report.
All right.
In record time.
Okay, August 21st, 2:00 PM, having employee appreciation, open ice cream bar at Kimball's, at Kimball's. So town hall will be closed that afternoon, and of course, select board is invited to attend and eat ice cream. We had a great volunteer training, both day and night session. We went through all kinds of things. We thought, we got pretty good feedback from the appointed officials, and we will continue to do that. We've got it down to new volunteers now, so it's not as many people. Obviously, we open it to anybody who wants to see it. The cemetery task force and safety committee have scheduled their first meetings, so those are starting to take off. Some HR reports that you can read.
Yeah.
And then here is a vote I'm asking you to take to open the warrant for the fall town meeting tonight with a closure date of September 24th.
All right, I move we open fall town meeting as of, sorry, warrant as of August 13th to be, with a closure date of September 24th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed.
This is just to put into your processing, without the AA bylaw and the TA bylaw, I'm not sure there would be an anchor for the fall town meeting. Just throwing that out there. Enough of a draw to bring someone.
Right.
As exciting as tailings is. The road, just going to go over some capital items quickly. If you went to Greeno Barn, all you would see is the middle section of the cupola with a box of slate tiles, and everything else is gone. So if you do want to see the Greeno Barn, now is your time to see it. It should be, it should be completely dismantled by the end of next week. The dismantling part is the slowest part.
Yeah.
The road repair, there's a lot of construction going on in town right now. So the road repair program starts next week on the 19th. And you will see this week some milling on several roads, but the, all the roads involved in the next week and a half will be Church Street, Curve Street, Proctor Street, Prospect Street, River Road, and School Street. With School Street being last, all of it will be done before school starts on the 26th. There's also a bike ride, and Jim's done a good job coordinating with them, a detour, making sure that they're taken care of and not riding down milled roads, surprisingly, which wouldn't have been bad. The Westford Street culvert, the pipe went in today, so they're moving pretty quickly. I know this is a significant detour in town. People have been pretty good about it. We haven't really had any complaints, as they know it's an important closure. Should be done by the end of the week, and I'm feeling really good about the contractor, their communication, and their professionalism. So appreciate that. DPW's monitoring heavily, and I'm walking down every day and seeing it as well. Corey Auditorium, electrical construction. Jeremy has completely taken over this project, but I have good faith in him. They are starting electrical construction this month, and then as soon as the rest of the supplies are delivered, the project should be completed in time for fall performances at the auditorium, which is good news, including fall town meeting. He'll have new lights for all of you. Dog park, they will start marking and finishing their permitting.
Marking, that's a dog joke?
Yeah. They will start tree clearing this week at Bantha Davis, assuming they get their permitting.
I've got my crew out there.
So...
Thanks for the visual.
I do expect, I do expect people will comment on trees coming down. So if you can help communicate to your people that that has been allowed, for the most part, that would be great. Central burying ground, we have four requests for quotes out for that CPA project that was approved at town meeting. Have an update for you on that soon. And then the concrete work at the school that was approved as part of the capital plan is complete now at the school, in time for school start. Building construction projects, we had a pre-bid conference. We'll be opening bids next week for the OPM and hopefully selecting the OPM that night, or at least OPM's interview with selection happening the next week. Police renovation is due next week as well, the OPM. The building committee will review that on Friday, the 23rd. And Barney is your liaison there, she's been invited. They'll select OPM for an in-person interview and could have a selection as early as the end of this month. And then bidding will start for the police station, assuming we get through Board of Health permitting. And then the fire station, this, I will get that RFS out for that OPM this week, so you should see that by the end of September, the decision for you to start working on. Okay, Niche is also working on two select board requests. We are assessing Pheasant Hill Lane for improvements that would be needed in order to complete that top coat.